Go ahead and start here. We are reconvening from closed session and there is nothing to report out, so I will adjourn the special meeting at 6:19 PM. And that takes us to our regular meeting. At this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, February the 12th, 2025, and the time is 6:20 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, February 14th at 1:00 PM, and Tuesday, February 18th at 9:00 AM on Metro Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this and previous meetings can be viewed on demand at www.ellgrovecity.org or youtube.com/MetroCable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or unmute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete one of the blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber and provided to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I will move into the roll call. And for the roll call, I will start out with Councilmember Spies.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Present.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robles.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. Thank you. All right, next up is our land acknowledgement. Would our Vice Mayor please assist?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plain Meowak, who live as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since the time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancheria Tribe, the only federalized recognized tribe in Sacramento County who have endured because of their bravery, resilience, determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to invite up our Fire Chief, Felipe Rodriguez, to help lead us this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please place your right hand and repeat after me. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, please join us for a brief moment of silence. All right, next up is our approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please, Clerk.
Under Section 3, there are no closed-session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, and the first being Item 4.1, which is a proclamation and recognition of Black History Month.
Excellent. Well, at this time, I would like to call up Ms. Judy Covington to the podium.
There she is. All right, Black History Month, February 2025. Whereas since 1976, February has been designated Black History Month as a time in which especially memorable events are recognized and celebrated, honoring and affirming the importance of African-American history and culture as an essential element to the foundation of American history. And whereas the theme for Black History Month, African-Americans and Labor, recognizes the vital role that African-Americans have played in the American workforce from the early days of slavery to the present day. And whereas Judy Covington, an Elk Grove resident and community leader, serves on the Measure E, Citizens Oversight Committee, an advisory body to the Elk Grove City Council that reviews the revenue and expenditures of the funds generated by general transactions and use our sales tax measure. And whereas Judy, a highly accomplished Realtor with Keller Williams Realty, has been a passionate advocate for homeownership and the real estate profession for over two decades. As a former president of the Sacramento Association of Realtors, she has served at the local, state, and national levels, championing housing policies and community service initiatives. And whereas for Judy, real estate is more than just a transaction. It's a personal journey that revolves around helping people achieve their dreams and improve their lives as she works to improve the lives of residents on a daily basis. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims February 2025 as Black History Month in the City of Elk Grove. And we thank you, Ms. Judy Covington, for your commitment to our city. Thank you and congratulations. Thank you. The floor is yours.
I don't know which mic, but I just want to say thank you very much. I am a proud Elk Grove, California resident. I will protect Elk Grove at every chance that I get. Some people seem to think we were a cow town, and we are no longer, even though we do like the feel of the cow town, the intimacy of it. So I thank all of you in the City Council for giving me this honor. And I want to say that I will never stop advocating for homeownership, and I will never stop advocating for the City of Elk Grove. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Wait, wait, wait.
Also, I just wanted to say, Judy, this has been a long time coming. I believe this, this is since 2025, has to be your year because you've been getting awards nonstop since, since last month.
True.
And it's a true testament of just everything you've done for this region, for the city. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Judy.
Well, we only have one. I get a picture with you guys.
Absolutely. We get a picture of you.
You get me with my regular, like, actual dress shoes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I got the power right on. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. There you go.
Whoops.
Kasumnas Community Services District Fire Department regarding emergency readiness.
Well, good evening, Honorable Madam Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Robles, and members of the City Council. I'm Felipe Rodriguez, your Fire Chief. It's my privilege this evening to present to you in partnership with our Police Department, specifically Andrea Cortez from the Real-Time Information Center. That's your manager, and we'll be presenting this in partnership. So I'm going to cover the first part, and then she's going to take over for the second part, and we'll be here to answer any questions you may have. I need to start off by saying that I feel that, as your Fire Chief, that we are very prepared. This community is well-prepared. We have a great partnership with our Police Department, a great partnership with our water agencies, and based on what occurred in Los Angeles, and which was part of the purpose of this evening's presentation, that we need to look into what we're doing well and what we need to improve upon, and that's the part of this presentation tonight. So with that, I'm going to cover a few different topics, and then we're going to go right into the emergency preparedness for the city. But the first item is our Fire Department's overview, the risk of wildfire here in Elk Grove. Of course, we have floods and other hazards that we face, but the main one is the risk of wildfire, which is at the forefront. Deployment of resources to mitigate the fires, access to sufficient water supply and hydrant inspections, and fire prevention readiness. We'll conclude with emergency preparedness, the plans, and evacuation of the city. First is a little overview of our department. We do cover a lot more square mileage than what's here in Elk Grove. We actually cover 157 square miles, a lot of the unincorporated area of South Sacramento County and the City of Galt, along in the 42 square miles that we have here in Elk Grove. We cover a population of about 210,000 people, 178,000 or so are here in Elk Grove, and we respond to about 24,000, just under 25,000, calls per year. Our staffing is 53 personnel on duty every single day, 365, responding out of nine fire engines, eight ambulances, a truck company. We have 10 cross-staffed Wildland firefighting units, and we, thanks to Measure E, we added two squads, so thank you very much to the voters. And we added another battalion chief. We now have two battalion chiefs on duty every day. The coverage areas, you see they're in the border outlining the two cities and the South Sacramento County unincorporated area, is our 157 square miles. As I mentioned, 42 square miles are at the top there in the outline with the dashed blue line within Elk Grove itself. The remainder is Galt and South Sacramento County. Our fire station locations are nine fire stations. We have the seven at the top there in Elk Grove, and then we have two down in Galt. But we work together to protect the entire area, the entire district, and we partner with our neighboring agencies. The risk of wildfire in Elk Grove. So if you look at the map there on the left, you see that the colored areas there that are the heat maps of where the fires would likely occur or have more potential to grow. The boxed area in the center is Sacramento County. We do have some orange-yellow areas around us, but if you move down to Southern California, you see the red areas. And if you look at the area there that I put a circle around, that there, that's exactly where Pacific Palisades is located, where the really dark red spot is. And that's the threat that occurs in the state of California. This map is created by CAL FIRE, and these are your high-fire hazard severity zone areas throughout the state of California. A wildfire is an unplanned and uncontrolled fire in grasslands, prairies, or forests. Elk Grove does have a few influence areas. Those areas, as you look at the map on the right, are at the Stone Lake Refuge, rural East Elk Grove, and near seasonal water areas. On the left is the Stone Lake Refuge in the circle, and on the right is East Elk Grove. Those would be our influence areas that we have a higher potential for a fire to grow. You can see that they are either in the low or moderate areas with a couple high areas. We have no very high areas, but we are very prepared for any of the areas that we do have. In addition to that, there is potential risk as anywhere in the state of California or throughout the nation. If we were to have a very high-wind event, there is a risk for a large residential fire that could occur anywhere. In Los Angeles, they had 100 mile an hour winds. We will reach between 50 to 70 here in this area, but that, in combination with a depletion of resources, is what creates that situation to happen where the fire just gets completely out of control. Fireworks are also another thing that we're concerned with. Those do pose a greater risk on July 4th. Fortunately, we do overstaff on July 4th. We add additional battalion chiefs. All the chief officers are called back, and we pre-deploy resources here in town, add additional fire engines. So we're better prepared for a larger fire to occur or multiple fires to occur at the same time. We do ask that people don't launch fireworks that fly up into the sky, and that really helps us out. But a large wind event in the middle of July or beginning of July while people are celebrating our independence, that would cause a big problem for us. Areas without hydrants would also be at greater risk. On the east side, we do have some areas that are primarily run out of wells, and there are no hydrants. We do bring water tenders for those areas to bring our own water, but those are also at higher risk. A few mitigation factors that we have put in place for many years and continue to do is to add sufficient personnel and firefighting resources to combat any fires that may occur. We also make sure that the construction of the buildings, in partnership with many, are to the highest standards, all the latest building codes and fire code standards. And the residential occupancies since 2010 have been sprinklered, so that's a very important thing for all of us. We do have a great vegetation management program, a weed abatement program, that's ran by our Fire Prevention Division, and we do collaborate with Sacramento County Industry Working Group. We have two members from our department or from our Kasumnas Community Services District that attend the meetings regularly, and that includes new housing that's built and the safety of that housing. Adequate water supply and hydrant inspections and testing. We've been working with our water partners to improve the quantity of times that they actually inspect hydrants. We ask for once per year, and we're working closely with them to get to that point. I will say proudly that Elk Grove Water District, and I know that their general manager is here tonight, they have moved their inspection schedule to once per year, which is in line with all of the standards. Community preparedness, that's a very important one, and the Police Department will cover the community preparedness for this evening. Regarding the deployment of resources to mitigate fires, that is the 911. The resources that you see out there, the fire engines, truck, our new squads, all the personnel that would come together to combat any emergency that we have here in our, our city. We've invested over $11 million over the last three years into fire apparatus, brand-new fire apparatus, to make sure we have enough reserves, frontline apparatus in place. We've used Measure E funds for some of the new staff vehicles that we've purchased. We have an apparatus replacement plan as part of our department's strategic plan, so we replace them after probably about 12 years, and they go into reserve. So for a total length of 20 years, depending upon the resource. But we have fire engines, a truck, of course, our dual-role ambulances, they have paramedics on them, command vehicles, wildland fire engines. Our water tenders have the extra water, and emergency staff vehicles, other auxiliary vehicles, we have plenty that get replaced. Apparatus, and I apologize that the logo is right in the center, but it moved on this due to the formatting, but the vehicles, they're replaced on a schedule based on mileage, usage, and safety of the vehicle. We've also added 30 new firefighters since 2020, and that's a really important thing. We added Station 77, including Engine 77 and Medic 77, 15 personnel there, and then 15 additional personnel through Measure E, and that was for our Squad 71, 74, and our new additional battalion chief. And lastly, and it's kind of covered there, but we do have a standards of cover document that we completed in 2023, and that tells you where your resources should be, how they should be deployed to meet the response times, and we have our strategic plan in place currently, and we're seeking accreditation, which we hope to have by August of 2025. All the documents are written. We're sending them in before the end of this month for final approval. When it comes to the weather and red flag warnings, the National Weather Service provides fire weather watches for us, and those dictate the next 12 to 72 hours, it could be a few days from now, or the following 12 to 72 hours, and what's going to occur during that time. Do we have a high-wind potential? Do we have low relative humidity? So when it comes to a red flag warning, the little chart there on the bottom has the relative humidity on the left and the wind on the right, and depending upon which, where it lands, that would be a red flag warning. We primarily land in the center two, between 9 to 18% or 19 to 28% for the relative humidity and the winds that are associated. So when those are going to be in line for the next eight hours, that becomes a red flag warning. When we have a red flag warning, if we have a grass fire, we send additional resources. We'll send three wildland fire engines, a battalion chief, and water tenders, depending upon location. On the east side of town, most definitely, we'll have the water tenders respond to that location for the water. We can special request a dozer there on the bottom, a picture on the bottom, or helicopter on the top right through Metro Fire. We have a contract with them, and those will respond during the summer upon special request. If we have to call for an additional alarm, you'll hear a second alarm. That means it's a repeat of the first alarm plus two more water tenders, so we can have enough water on scene. We also have a mutual aid system. Fortunate to have that with all of our partners here in Sacramento County. It's automatic aid for, for all of us. The closest resources respond. We call it a boundaryless system. You see the picture there on the right. That's our four firefighters that responded down to the Pacific Palisades fire, and they were there for, you know, within a few hours of it starting, and 56 straight hours with no rest was their initial assignment, and they were there for two weeks. We can pre-deploy resources in partnership with CAL OES, and those are paid for by the state, and we have requested those 4th of July. We requested pre-deployment of resources, and we had the floods in January of 2023. So we actually just, in the county, had some pre-deployed resources last week, so we could put them in place. Down in LA, they did have pre-deployed resources prior to that fire starting. They just, too, too much wind, and the fire just moved too fast for them, and they, they did run out of water. We can request for additional resources that are outside of Sacramento County. If it gets too large, we'll reach out to the other counties here in Northern California, or we can move to Southern California and get resources, just as they did for the Palisades fire and in Altadena. Comes to water supply, these are our, our areas for our water purveyors. They're color-coded in orange is the Sacramento County Water Agency on the left. We have Elk Grove Water District on the right in green. They do have the original light green, which was the original, is probably the city limits, and that's their water that they actually have 4 million gallons to cover, plenty of water there. In comparison, that little tiny area there in East Elk Grove has 4 million gallons of water. In Pacific Palisades, they had 3 million gallons of water, so they did run out. And that was the original report. Of course, they're still conducting their investigation, but that's what we believe that they had down there. The San Inez Reservoir had 117 million gallons, but it was under construction or repair. Down in Galt, we do have another water district down there and an irrigation district. The big question has been posed to me as your Fire Chief is what happened down there? Could it happen here? It can happen anywhere. If you have more resources pumping water out of the hydrants than what's available, and you have very high winds like, like they had there, it could happen anywhere. Not likely to happen, though. That's what I can tell you, especially for those who are watching from home, have the confidence that it's not likely to happen. We do have high-wind events here. We do get fires that occur here in Elk Grove. We normally are able to handle them and mitigate them, and with some good preparedness and enough resources and personnel, we'll be able to take care of the fires a lot easier. But yes, it could happen if, if you run out of water or, and/or you don't have enough resources and the winds are 100 miles per hour, so, but not very likely. A fire engine can pump, flow about 1,500 gallons per minute, so the water goes quick. Insurance Service Office, we, we go through a survey every five years, and their fire flow requirements are 3,500 gallons per minute for three hours. And speaking to the general manager from Elk Grove Water, they could pump that for eight hours without a problem. That's what they test them to, so more than double. Our water supply system received a score of 28.49 out of 30, almost perfect. So we are very confident in our water system here for the entire district. Hydrant placement and quantity of hydrants received 2.98 out of 3, almost a perfect score. Where we can do a little bit of work is on our hydrant inspections and flow testing. That received 1 out of, 1.04 out of 7. So that's the area that we want to improve upon. As I mentioned, Elk Grove Water has already moved theirs up to once per year. We're still working with SAC County Water Agency. They're currently inspecting them every three to five years. We want those to be moved up to once per year. And the flow testing is every five years. That one's a little bit more difficult because you're flowing a lot of water, so a lot of collaboration with how we conduct that. Regarding the strategy for water supply, just continue to collaborate with our water agency partners, conduct those inspections. We believe we have plenty of water, and we have a very robust municipal water system within the district and definitely here in the city. And just continue to meet with them to try to meet that ISO standard and seek reassessment for our ISO standard, our classification for the city. We're currently Class II. I believe we can reach Class I in 2027 when we're, when we ask for reassessment. The last section I have is our fire prevention readiness. We do conduct inspections on a regular basis every, throughout the year. We, last year, we conducted 1,865 plan reviews and 5,100 construction inspections, a lot of housing, 100% compliance with our state-mandated inspections, all the schools, apartments, and other things that are mandated. And operational permits are your more high-hazard occupancies. We were able to do about 88% of those. Those aren't required, but we do them because we want to ensure that the community is safe. Vegetation management program, we have 900-plus properties that we inspect. We sent out 367 issued correction notices, and 97% of them corrected them, and we correct, we corrected the other 11% as a district. And the last thing is pretty much what can our community do, or what can you do as well to be fire-ready? And the first thing is to prepare your home yourself for a potential fire emergency. Ensure you have working smoke detectors on every floor outside of your sleeping areas. Create a fire escape plan, including a meeting place away from your home. Assemble an emergency go-back for 72 hours. Have important documents readily available. And know two ways out of your neighborhood. A lot of people know only one way out. Know two ways out of your neighborhood. Create defensible space around your home for 30 feet, if you have it, up to 100 feet in the roll areas, and make sure you clean out all the rubbish and anything that's dry around your house. So those are the main areas. I'll be happy to answer any questions, probably after the presentation from the Police Department, so that some of them may already be answered by Andrea. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Andrea Cortez, and I am the Real-Time Information Center Manager, and I also serve as the city's Emergency Management Coordinator. I'm going to go ahead and launch our, this presentation. And so tonight, I'm going to provide a high-level overview of the city's emergency readiness. And when we discuss emergency readiness, it's important to define what that is for the purposes of this presentation. Emergency readiness refers to being adequately prepared to respond effectively to emergencies, disasters, or crises. We're going to focus on four key areas for readiness: streamlined communications, preparedness planning, training and awareness, and resource allocation. And we'll get into the first topic of communication. So you're seeing a few things on the screen here. I'll call your attention to the middle of the screen. This is the evacuation map for the City of Elk Grove. You can find this on Sacramento County's Preparedness website under Sacramento Ready. In a brief, later on in the presentation, there'll be a brief demo as to how to access this map through their website. But it shows the major thoroughfares throughout the city, and we would want all residents to be aware of at least two ways to exit their neighborhood. In the event that one is compromised, they can use the other exit route, and then there would be direction to a major thoroughfare to get them out away from the disaster. Just below the map, you will see that SAC Alert, Sacramento Alert icon. That is our communication system. That's our public mass notification system through Sacramento County. And it is how we would alert community members of a, of an emergency event. And we have predetermined templates available that would allow us to quickly send out the messaging. In the event that we needed to send out messaging, we would also use news media, social media, and radio broadcasting. We also ask anybody at home or listening to opt in to Sacramento Alert. There'll be a QR code in a moment for folks to sign up to receive those local alerts, to be aware of emergencies developing within the city or within the county. Some of you may receive them regarding missing persons or roadblocks, any sort of emergency event. Another piece to consider when we talk about readiness is our internal communications and how well we are communicating as an organization. And so we also use the SAC Alert for call-outs, so if we needed to activate an EOC, we would do that through SAC Alert. We have, again, templates and a distribution list established so we could quickly send out that messaging. And we also have our established networking groups that allow us to be sure that we have the correct contacts, we have correct email addresses, so we can make that process seamless. Then we have our emergency communications to ensure that our first responders can communicate effectively. So we are a part of the Sacramento Regional Radio System, and through that system, we have the ability to patch channels, meaning that if there's something developing on a school channel, and we need to ensure that Elk Grove first responders can talk on the same channel, we can do that through proper protocols and approvals. We also have backup mutual aid channels that would allow us to dedicate a channel to a specific event for seamless communication. And then this all just speaks to the vital communication that's needed for stakeholders. We'll move into preparedness. And so these, these are our plans. These are what we would reference in the event of a disaster. They're established. They provide guidance, recommendations. They establish authority. There's roles and responsibilities are already outlined in there, so you're not having to figure that out in the midst of a crisis. So we have the Sacramento County plans, which is the emergency operations plans, the evacuation functional annex, extreme weather annex, and hazard mitigation. Those are at the county level, and then at the city level, we have the emergency operations plans, our local hazard and mitigation plans, and the safety element of the general plan, and this is in addition to the evacuation analysis scenario report. So if we did have to move into an evacuation, we would reference the evacuation functional annex, and it would be in accordance with that with the Sacramento County. These, what you're seeing in the middle of your screen now is the evacuation zones, which do align with our police beats, and so our first responders would be very familiar with the, the areas that we need to evacuate. Evacuations are incident-dependent, so it's really, there's so many variables that develop as far as what situation we're dealing with, and so we'd have to take into account all the, the different elements that are taking place, assessing the, the disaster, how fast is it moving? Do we have time to prepare, or do we need to evacuate now? And so those are things that are just dependent upon the incident. There would be significant coordination between law enforcement, law enforcement and Kasumnas Fire, and then if needed, if it was a serious incident, we would definitely activate the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. And then we would do all this in coordination with Sacramento County OES, and we could rely on them to send any sort of notifications if needed if we were occupied at the local level. And just for educational purposes, we'll discuss evacuation warnings. So evacuation warning means there is a danger to life and property, and people should use this warning to get ready to evacuate. Those who need additional time should leave when the warning is given rather than wait for an evacuation order. order. So anytime there's a warning issued, we want folks to start gathering their personal effects and be prepared to evacuate. An evacuation order is just that. It means you need to evacuate now. Staying could result in a less of life or slow the work of first responders. And unfortunately, sometimes the evacuation order is the only notice that folks get. So that's not ideal, but due to the nature of disasters, that's just unfortunately how it is sometimes. The, what you're seeing right here is the five Ps of evacuation. So we always want people to remember these, people, pets, they're priceless items, personal effects, papers, and prescriptions. And so here's the information regarding Sacramento County's Ready website. And if anybody, you can scan that QR code and you'll be taken to this website. It's a great website that has lots of information. So to know your evacuation zone, you would go to this website and click on that preparedness link. And then it'll load here. And what's nice about this is it is an interactive map. So you can select the zone where you work or where you reside, and it brings you, brings up some information regarding that particular zone and provides a QR code that allows you to link to these, to the maps that I was referencing earlier. So it is interactive. It does provide a great deal of information. There's information about the neighborhoods within the zones in addition to parks and other features of the zone. Once they select the link to the evacuation zone map, then they will be taken to those maps. So that's great for reference. And then if anyone in the gallery or watching at home, you can scan this QR code and to be taken to the SAC Alerts website to opt in for emergency messaging. The third component of emergency readiness is training and awareness. So we do have coordinating meetings at the county level where we go and meet with everyone in the operational area. We discuss any plans that need to be updated. We stay connected as far as anything that's developing for awareness within the, within the county. Our first responders receive training. They're consistently training for any sort of mass casualty event. Some of those, while they're not natural disasters, those skill sets can be easily transferred to working in disaster incident. So they're familiar with that process. And they do have periodic update, update classes for emergency response. And then the city of Elk Grove, our own personnel will be going through this spring, a EOC training, which will highlight the rules and functions of an emergency operations center. So there'll be a clear understanding of the expectations and what's to take place in the event we did have to activate a center. Moving forward, we're also going to look to have biannual training exercises where we can really test these plans and these processes and go through the full motions to identify any gaps and then refine our processes to be more effective the next time. And the final component is resource allocation. Through the city of Elk Grove's ability to leverage technology, the city is well positioned to maximize response and deploy resources appropriately. So some of those programs are the Real Time Information Center and the Drone as a First Responder Program. In addition, we also have a robust UAS program. So what you're seeing here is some footage from 2022 when the atmospheric river came through and we had some flooding. And we joined, we collaborated with Consumers Fire and some other special districts to get a good aerial view of some compromises in the levee. And so they were able to use this to enhance their situational awareness rather than trying to navigate through that terrain. And so it worked out really nicely. Our DFR program, also Drone as a First Responder Program, assist in providing real time updates to first responders to enhance situational awareness and assist in maximizing resources. So this is, these are the kinds of, right here, you're seeing a structure fire. This drone was able to be there within 40 seconds. It was on the east side of town. And so we do have multiple launch locations throughout the city. So we can be on scene fairly quickly. This is an example of a car fire that we were able to respond to and provide that situational awareness for responders. So we could easily transition this to flooding or a natural disaster to be able to better allocate resources and be a little bit more strategic with our response. Another point of resource allocation is an adequate number of personnel and equipment. We do believe we have sufficient staffing levels for, with the Elk Grove Police Department, city of Elk Grove, and Consumers Fire for day to day operations. However, should an event go longer, we would likely have to lean on our county partners. And some of this will be identified as we go through those training exercises to see about sufficient staffing levels. And through regional partnerships, we would be able to lean on the county for assistance if needed, if the event went longer than a 12-hour operational period. So again, just to highlight the four sections: streamlined communications, preparedness planning, training and awareness, and resource allocation. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Wow. Thank you for that amazing presentation to both of you. I'm sure there's a few questions or comments. So we'll start to the left here with Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, it was very informative. So thank you both for doing this. I think all our residents and the public weren't aware of all the work that you do to organize and prepare in the event we have these natural disasters or emergencies. So thank you very much.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Chief, for being here. And thank you as well for presenting. As Councilman Sun said, sorry, this is something that's kind of, people don't want to talk about it, but it's very much needed, especially in a time of disaster when there's a lot of chaos going on. The military always use the terminology controlled chaos, right? How do we control what's in our, it's in our three feet ahead, three feet behind, and three feet to the side? So thank you for that. And thank you for speaking to the evacuation map. I don't think, I mean, by show of hands, how many of you guys have actually looked at that evacuation map? All right. So not, not much of the general public, other than, other than police and fire, right? So we need to continue looking at that map and continue like to have go bags ready to go in case of an emergency. So thank you so much because you're highlighting something that we don't talk about that often, only when something occurs. But thank you. We truly appreciate it.
Councilmember Brewer.
I want to thank Andrea and Chief Rodriguez for the presentation. Making sure that the community is prepared and making sure that you're prepared has always been on top of mind. I've always been aware of that for many years. One of the things that I've, that I've always wondered about, in the situation where you have these large events like this, there used to be something called the Golden Guardian that was done every year. And it was something that we would each do as separate communities, and then we would do it as a part of a larger effort. Do we still practice that on a, on an annual basis? Because that's definitely a good way as part of like getting your reps, getting your practice in in the event something real happens. Over the last few years, we've had a couple of real events happen. So you, you get your, your real time reps in. But is that something that we still practice and, and still do on a yearly basis or every two years?
So thanks for the question. The Golden Guardian was that, the exercise that was conducted here in Sacramento County a regular basis. There are still drills that occur. I will say that, that sometimes it's put on the, on the side, on the side burner for an annual exercise, a real functional exercise. Some of these disasters bring those things to light. So there are exercises that are regularly conducted. The County Office of Emergency Services takes the lead on coordinating. It's important that we, as a local community, also conduct those annual exercises. I'm, you know, very happy to hear that there's going to be one here in the springtime. And then every couple of times a year, at least a tabletop. But a nice functional exercise where your emergency operations center is exercised, elected officials are part of it. And, and we run a real scenario, like what would we actually have to do? And it takes some time to plan that and takes resources to plan that. But those are so important to have once a year, at least every other year, to conduct a nice big one, that you'll be able to find out your strengths and your weaknesses. So yeah, they still are conducted throughout the area, but bringing one locally here is very, very important.
No, I, I think, I thank you for, for that answer, Chief, because it's always a situation where you always want to be ready so you don't have to get ready. And that's something that both the police and fire here in Elk Grove has always prided itself on and has always done for many, many years. So very happy to hear that. And I concur with, with Vice Mayor Robles in terms of having a go bag and having that ready. And that's something that we should all have. Something that has all of our essentials, all your, your personal identification, any like your vial of life, where you have your prescriptions, or whatever your needs are, or what your health limitations are. Those things are always important because you never know when you have to like evacuate. Because when someone's knocking on the door and saying, we need you out of the house now, you don't want to have to hurry up and try and get all that together. You always want to have that with you. And so, so thank you for this presentation. This is very, very helpful, especially given the situation that we're seeing down Southern California. Hearts and prayers go out to everyone affected by that, because that's something that we definitely want to get back on track on, but we know it's going to take years for us to get back on track. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Spies.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, thank you, Chief Rodriguez and Andrea for being here this evening. I really appreciate the presentations. I think in Elk Grove here, we should be very proud of our public safety partnership between our Elk Grove Police Department and of course with our CSD Fire. That said, I think I also want to thank Mr. Camelos for being here today, because you're very much an important part of, not just, it's just not about drinking water. It's about having water that's ready at the moment of need. And that's a very critical part of our public safety. And so I thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Camelos. So not much more to add to than what my cohorts have said. But I definitely appreciate, I think in Elk Grove, we should consider ourselves extremely lucky that we are in the position that we're in, both geographically and as well as the professionalism that we have from our partnership here. So thank you very much for being here. Appreciate you.
Madam Mayor, if I can, if I, just a quick question. For the EOC training, I know people usually get all weird when electeds stop by, but can we incognito stop by to see?
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll get you those dates.
Well, I want to thank you both for the fabulous presentation. You know, what's, what really started this was I was getting a number of calls and emails from the residents wanting a safety update, because we saw all of those images on the TV, and it was alarming. It was frightening. And so this presentation, it's very reassuring. And to my colleagues' comments about the strong partnership between police and fire is invaluable. We love, we value our partnership. And what I would love to see is this present, these presentations shared with our community via the newsletter or however we want to get the information out. But I think it's very important for our residents to know that they're safe, they're in good hands, and we have safety measures in place in the event something terrible should happen. So thank you both for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. With that, we will go on to public comment. I have a few people signed up to speak. I do see two that are listed twice. So I don't know if the-
Artivits for the name. We were giving some cues that some folks are dropping off photos for the council to see this evening. So that's just so you have a cue that they'll have photos, but we'll pull up their name and we'll clean up the board as we move along.
Okay. We will start with Dustin Noble. And after Dustin is Bob Turner.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Dustin Noble, and I live in the Ellen Fikeert neighborhood. This is Buzz. He is a five-year-old sassy poodle. Excuse me, I get a little emotional. He was the best, most wonderful dog in the world. And he was a member of my family, and he was my autistic son's best friend in the whole world. On January 21st, he was quite literally taken from us, being pulled under and through my neighboring fence by a very dangerous and violent German shepherd. And for several minutes, I had to bear witness to the mauling of Buzz. I will spare you the details, what I witnessed, because there are children in the room. When I was finally able to gain access to the yard to get to Buzz, the damage was catastrophic. He would succumb to those wounds later that day. And this was quite literally a ticking time bomb waiting to happen. This dog has traumatized my family for two years, causing hundreds of dollars of damage and repairs to our fence that we share with them. And this was just waiting to happen. And it finally did. And it was horrible. I reached out to animal control that day. A report was filed, an investigation was done. I was told, was told the city would look into it. And the best the city could do was slap a dangerous dog label on this animal, which is nowhere near sufficient, but I understand it's what could be done. I was later informed that the city decided not to move forward with this label, that there was nothing that could be done. I don't accept this answer at all. I'm telling you that this because i- if it was my son, my autistic son playing near that fence, and he was pulled through the fence and mauled by this dog, we would not be having this conversation. There would be no gray area. And that's the answer that I received, that this was a gray area, basically, that the attack happened in my neighbor's yard, there was a fence involved. It doesn't matter to me. Buzz didn't want to be in that yard. He wanted to be in my yard. He was pulled from my property to that property. All I'm asking for is follow up on this. I'm asking for my city to do right by Buzz and protect my family, because right now that dog is still there terrorizing us. And I expect to follow up on this. Please give me some justice for Buzz. Thank you.
Sorry for your loss, sir. Is there someone that can follow up with Mr. Noble?
Yes, Mayor, we'll, we'll take care of it.
All right. Next up is Bob Turner, followed by Ron Wyman.
I get two microphones? Good evening. My name is Bob Turner, Mayor, councilmembers. I'd like to, I'm here just for a suggestion only. I read in the Elk Grove Citizen that they're wanting to make a name for the new zoo. While we know it's going to be two or three years down the road or maybe even five. But anyway, I came up with an idea. As you know us, I have Ohio State equipment on. While the university is now called the Ohio State University, and I'd like to make a suggestion for the councilor, anybody that wants to listen, for the new zoo called the Elk Grove City Zoo in Sacramento County. That way you cover the city of Elk Grove, you cover Sacramento, and you also cover the county. That's all.
Thank you, sir. So we will be discussing that in item 9.1, but thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Okay. Next up is Ron Wyman, followed by Mr. Morris.
Good evening. My name is Ron Wyman. I was here a little over a year ago on behalf of my mother-in-law, Jean Lawton. She was forced to live in unlivable conditions. I believe you guys have the pictures of the conditions she was forced to live in and consume this fire, not once, not twice, but three times. Picked her up off the floor. That house is covered in urine and feces. She used a walker. She could not maneuver around the house. Every egress except for the front door is blocked, as you can see. Not one person reported it. And, and so then I got involved with code enforcement. And after I left here last year, I left kind of warm and fuzzy because I thought we were making some headway. And then nothing ever happened. Well, she passed away in March of last year, not in her home, where we were trying to get her back to, because we didn't get any support from the city or county APS. And I was promised by Ms. Leece that they were going to make entry. I spent a lot of time in Ohio, and so I was back and forth. And she promised me they're going to make entry with or without support from Sack County. And then when I was in Ohio, she called and stated that they weren't going to do it. They backed out. It kind of almost sounded like they were intimidated by my brother-in-law, who forced my mother-in-law to live in these conditions. And then since then, I've tried to get reports. And there's, there's no meat on the bones on these reports. The police come out and there's, there's nothing there and to support my, my case. And, and then I, Officer Lopez the other day stated that if my wife and children were so afraid of my brother-in-law, that maybe they shouldn't come visit their mother and grandmother in her dying days. And you can't, you can't say that to people. I mean, you all have a mom or grandma. If you're afraid of your uncle or brother, you're not going to go visit your family member in their dying days? I mean, who, who says that? And it's just been an ongoing. And then, then Officer also, my brother-in-law had a battery, assault and battery on my daughter at, at the care home. And he, he called her in to give a report. And then he, the officer Lopez told her that if she filed charges, he scared her to not file charges because he said he could come after you for, for, well, for harassment. He said harassment. So you can't come after somebody for, for doing the right thing and saying- It's so, you can't come after somebody for, for doing the right thing and saying the right stuff. There's, he had no, no business scaring my daughter like that to, to not follow through with that. And then we had one instance where I had my Bluetooth on, speaking to 911. I never said a word to my brother-in-law over at Windsor, and so the 911 operator could listen to this conversation in the hallway. And for, it took him an hour and a half to get there. As the staff's yelling at him to back off and leave, it took an hour and a half. Now, I know every, every agency's stretched to the max, but an hour and a half when you're in a facility at eight o'clock at night with elderly folks, we need to do more for our elderly people. And there's some out there right now tonight, and if you're not getting help from the city, you contact me, I'll come help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Philip, followed by Bruce.
Is the mayor making a call for Philip Morris?
I'm sorry, this is, who are you?
I'm Philip Morris. Yes, that Philip Morris. Madam Mayor, the guy who gave $2,000 to your political campaign last year. I'm here to ask for the money back. You see, you and your boys on the podium are just two goody-two-shoes for my liking. I have to perpetuate a bad boy persona, one which I cannot allow you all to sully. You're intent to incarcerate as many bad guys as possible. Your maniacal support for Proposition 36 has crossed the line. You see, I am evil incarnate. Perhaps he can't be a man because he doesn't smoke the same cigarettes as me, but it's not just about brand loyalty. You see, that's okay because he's hooked on nicotine anyway. And that's all that matters in my, our business, which generates 750 billion every year, three quarters of a trillion dollars. Me and my brothers and cousins make up the 19th largest national revenue system on the planet, ahead of 180 other countries. That's what big tobacco is, baby. I'd rather you return the money than pretend to be a punk rogue thug like me. In the United States alone, 480,000 people die every year from my products, and 50,000 of them never even touch the stuff. I am the merchant of death. Please notice how still the police chief is, riveted to his seat. I don't fear arrest. So just return the money, and I'll give it to one of your more deserving future rivals. Meanwhile, I'm on call for Philip Morris.
Thank you for that. That was fabulous. Next up is Bruce Camelos.
I'm Bruce Camelos, general manager of the Elk Grove Water District, and I knew Chief Rodriguez is going to be presenting tonight on preparedness, and I wanted to support the Fire Chief's effort there, wanted to let the council know and the public here that Elk Grove Water District is taking the business of fire protection very seriously. So at the end of Railroad Street, we cover the Old Town area. We are west of, our service area is west of 99, east of Grant Line, south of Sheldon, and the heart of our system is the Railroad Water Treatment Plant at the end of Railroad Street. The Railroad Water Treatment Plant was built in 2005 for two reasons: to improve water quality, improve fire protection for the community. We have two 2 million gallon tanks, as the chief described. Those tanks with storage alone can provide fire flow at 3,500 GPM for eight hours. We also have four deep wells that are feeding that Railroad Water Treatment Plant that can provide up to 7,000 gallons per minute to replenish the water in those tanks. All of those wells are going to be on emergency generated power, if they're not already. And the Railroad Water Treatment, it also has emergency generator power that's diesel-driven that can last for 48 hours of continuous operation and run the full load of the treatment plant. We had the Fire Department come out and do a walkthrough, make sure we had good defensible space throughout the water treatment plant. They gave us an A, so we're looking good there. And so even in the event of a disaster where we have a major power outage, our emergency generators will kick on, our wells will be pumping into the Railroad Water Treatment Plant, our pumps will be pushing water out into the distribution system so that the Fire Department can do their job. That's on the supply side. On the distribution side, we have 1,701 fire hydrants. These are not the type of fire hydrants that were in the article in Sacramento Bee about a week ago. These are not these little wharf hydrants that populate about 25% of the hydrants in Pacific Palisades. These are large hydrants that are compliant with modern standards, and they can push out a lot of water. They have two, four, three nozzles on them, four and a half inch that hooks to the fire pump on the trucks, and two for hose connections. So we're well-equipped. We inspect those hydrants every year, as Chief Rodriguez said. So I just wanted to report out to you that we're in good shape at the Water District. Thank you very much.
Thank you for providing that information. Very helpful. Did you have a comment?
No, I was just going to say thank you, Mr. Camelos.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Next up is our final speaker. We have Lynn Wheat.
Tonight I have my friend, who's also a nurse, and we're going to do a little health education presentation for you because we care about our community. The American Heart Association has declared February as American Heart Month. Cardiovascular disease kills one in four individuals with smoking a major cause. 40,000 adults die each year in California from their own smoking. The health consequences of smoking go beyond cardiovascular disease. 22.3% of the cancer deaths in California are attributed to smoking, and even for non-smokers, secondhand smoke exposure is a risk factor for asthma in children. Despite this, tobacco companies have become determined in their efforts to keep their dangerous harmful products being sold by aggressive campaigning, aggressive marketing, and campaign contributions. Unfortunately, 90% of smokers first tried a tobacco product by age 18. Nicotine is highly addictive, and 5.9% of high schoolers used e-cigarettes. Recognizing the detrimental health impacts on society and our youth in particular, came the passage of SB 793 banning flavored tobacco vaping products, and most recently, the passage of AB 3218, which strengthened enforcement and increased and clarified banned tobacco products. However, influencers were to include exceptions into the bill permitting the sale of hookah, tobacco, and flavored cigars, and loose leaf tobacco selling for more than $12. Hookah smoking is no less toxic than cigarettes. Hookah smoke has high levels of harmful chemicals. Hookah smoked is linked to cancers, lung disease, and carbon monoxide poisoning. However, as the trend grade towards greater public health increases, 148 cities in California have adopted more restrictive smoking standards than the state law permits. Elk Grove is not one of them, and the tobacco lobby hopes we do not become number 149. I am not surprised, however, I am disappointed that tobacco money is flowing into the campaign coffer of our mayor to ensure that Elk Grove does not become number 149. I had hoped that our mayor, as a former school board member, would resist tobacco money, knowing how harmful and addictive it is to our young people. I believe she cared about the health of all of our residents. Mayor, you could do right by our community and donate these campaign contributions this month to the American Heart Association, American Cancer Society, or even the Elk Grove School District Tobacco Education Program. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment. We will move on to our next item. And that is our city manager's report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Jason Berman, your city manager, just a few items to report on this evening. First is, we have a city council special meeting, biennial strategic planning retreat. It'll be this next Thursday, February 20th, at District 56 in Veterans Hall from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. During this time, council members and staff will discuss key issues that goal prior for the next two fiscal years. Looking forward to the opportunity to discuss those things with the city council. Elk Grove Youth Commission will host the Path to Positivity event on Saturday, February 22nd, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Wachford Community Center. The free event is designed to connect teens with valuable resources, engaging activities, and a supportive community through interactive activities and guest speakers. Space is limited to the first 100 participants, and registration is required. The Stars of Service Volunteer Award nomination period is open now. It closes on Friday, February 28th. This is an annual award program to celebrate some of Elk Grove's outstanding community volunteers. More information and to make a nomination, please visit the city's website. Elk Grove proudly displays banners along Elk Grove Boulevard and Civic Center Drive honoring retired or honorably discharged members of the United States Armed Forces from Elk Grove. To include a veteran in the next round of installations, apply before Monday, March 3rd. And finally, in accordance with the city's holiday schedule, City Hall will be closed on Monday, February 17th, in observance of President's Day. Animal Shelter and Special Waste Collection Center will also be closed. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you for your report. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. We will move on to our next item, and that is our consent calendar. At this time, I will open up public comment. I don't have anyone signed up for consent, so I'll close public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is item 8.1.
8.1 is a public hearing that was continued from November 13th, 2024, to consider an ordinance amending the Old Town Special Planning Area.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen. Members of the Elk Grove City Council, Antonio Ablog, Planning Manager, Community Development Department. Here to present to you tonight the Old Town Special Planning Area Amendment for conditional use permits related to bars, breweries, brew pubs, and wine tasting. Again, as the clerk mentioned, this is an item that was continued from last November. This request is, and a request to adopt an ordinance approving an amendment to the Old Town Special Planning Area. This requested amendment would increase the allowed CUP capacity for CUPs for those bars, breweries, brew pubs, and wineries from the current cap of three to six. This would only affect one footnote in the current Old Town Special Planning Area. That's footnote 12 to the land use chart. You can see the language on the screen before you. This does limit the amount of conditional use permits for those alcohol-serving uses to three. The request tonight is to increase those to six. If you recall from staff's presentation last time, the Planning Commission issued its third CUP for a bar brewery or winery use last August. That means there are no more CUPs available for these types of uses. Therefore, the request tonight to increase that capacity to six. At the, the last meeting that we presented this to the council in November, the primary concerns raised during the public comments were related to safety and security within the Old Town Special Planning Area, and that additional outreach should be conducted with both the Elk Grove Historic Preservation Committee and the Old Town Elk Grove Foundation. With those concerns raised, the item was continued to February 12th, 2025, this evening's meeting. Staff did conduct the additional outreach as recommended. Staff presented the item to the Historic Preservation Committee on December 9th, 2024. A majority of the committee members were not in support of this land use change due to potential safety concerns, and their position that additional alcohol-serving businesses were not in line with the committee's vision for the Old Town area. The committee did express the desire to review the full range of allowed uses holistically as part of the upcoming Old Town Special Planning Area update, which will be forthcoming over the next few months. Furthermore, staff did present the amendment to the Old Town Elk Grove Foundation on, at its meeting on January 21st earlier this year. The foundation did not express opposition generally to increasing the amount of available CUPs, but they did express concern about all of those conditional use permits going to alcohol-only serving businesses like a bar. As far as public safety, Community Development Department did coordinate with both the Police Department and Public Works to formulate safety and security recommendations. Based on the Police Department's review of calls for service and the anticipated increase in activity, should these CUP uses be increased? Also, if the public events are increased in Old Town, they made a recommendation to assign two patrol officers to cover the Old Town area during these peak periods of activity, likely Friday and Saturday nights. And they also recommended to evaluate the feasibility of expanding the Drone as First Responder Program, those operational hours to provide weekend coverage to monitor the Old Town area. Furthermore, the Police Department recommended investigating the feasibility of installing Pan tilt zoom cameras throughout the Old Town Special Planning Area and automatic license plate reader cameras throughout Old Town, the Old Town area. Some of the recommended locations that would provide the necessary coverage are highlighted on the map. These are kind of the more active areas, and some of those areas such as alleys which could use, utilize increased eyes in those areas. In conjunction with those cameras, we would look to install sober, solar-operated lights to address some of those lighting concerns. Again, if the limit on the CUPs is increased, that limit would not approve any specific project. Those projects would still have to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis as they come in for review. Staff would continue to coordinate with the Police Department on each CUP request as they come in to evaluate the calls for service at that time and whether it would be appropriate based on the operational program of that requestor, whether it would be appropriate to make a positive recommendation should any of those CUPs come in, in the future. And we'd also continue to coordinate with Public Works on any infrastructure necessary to install additional cameras or lighting that would be necessary to, to augment the safety concern, augment the safety efforts throughout the Old Town area. As far as the California Environmental Quality Act, staff finds no further environmental review is necessary. The approval of bars, breweries, and wineries and brew pubs through increased cap on CUPs would not increase the density or intensity of development within, within Old Town, and the approval of any CUPs must comply with existing development standards and go through the CUP process with findings and conditions of approval. With that, staff does continue to recommend increase to the allowed CUPs within the Old Town Special Planning Area, requesting an increase of those CUPs from the existing three limit capacity to six. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare the public hearing is now open and open up public comment opportunity. We have two people signed up to speak on this item. Michael Manaski, followed by Randy Becker.
I wondered why I didn't get a notice about this because I'm right, I'm like three doors away from getting notification about this project, about this change. And it seems to me that, given that the Police Department has said that it wants to assign officers and wants, and is concerned actually about putting in surveillance of equipment near existing bars and restaurants that serve alcohol, I, I, I'm opposed to this, the idea of increasing the number of bars and exclusively alcoholic establishments. This area is frequently used by families, and the most robust use of Old Town is really demographically heterogeneous. I mean, there's a lot of different kinds- I mean, there's a lot of different kinds of people that go through Old Town. There's children, there's elderly people, there's, you know, the Windsor Place that was just mentioned down near, in that area, is not far away, where elderly people are cared for, nursing home. Anyway, I'm opposed to increasing the number. There's plenty of access to alcohol everywhere, you know, it's, you can't, it's not like you can't get it in a restaurant or a grocery store nearby, and I oppose the increase of the number from three to six. Thank you. And I live in the area.
Next up is Randy Becker, and that will be our final speaker unless I get another blue card.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, staff. I think moving, first of all, we only have one bar, and that needs to be identified by staff. Just one. The rest of them must have eateries. Period. Full stop. So if we're going to move to three, I would expect that be the same, that these would be locations that would serve alcohol but also food, or have food available. I'm not opposed to the expansion to six. However, I think we need to look at the overall progress through Old Town on each application, the safety of the community, the lighting, what the hours of service is going to be, what kind of establishment is it? Is it just wine? Is it just beer? Do they have a full bar? Is it a dinner house? I'm absolutely opposed to any city money being spent on any further restaurant-bar locations. We need to clear up the situation we're currently in. That's maybe not any fault of our own, but we need to make sure that we don't go back again for that. As far as adding officers, I think it's a great idea. Put boots on the ground, have them walk around, get to know the people. That's exactly why we brought in Measure E, meaning it was part of it. What can we do to make things better? What can we offer in services? What do we need to do? And do we need to expand certain things at certain times? So Measure E is a good program for that, if we need to do that. But I think we need to look at this at one application at a time. Where is it located? What are the needs? Make a checklist. And that checklist should have everything. Should be the safety of the community, safety of the parents, safety of the automobiles in the area, the lighting, pedestrian, cross streets, you know, walkways, and all that. So I think it's a great idea, but we need to be cautious when we move forward to make sure that it's done correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. That is our final speaker on this item. So I will close the public comment opportunity and open it up for discussion here. I'll start to the right. Councilmember Spies.
Couple questions first. We don't have any actual pending applications right now for any additional establishment.
No, there's no existing pending applications for any of these uses.
Okay. However, there are folks who have expressed desire.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So, and the Old Town SPA is going to start being revisited in a few months? What is the timeline of that Old Town SPA for its full review?
Yeah, we're getting back on that. We're working, staff's working on just restarting the effort, re-scoping what the outreach and engagement plan is going to look like, what questions we're going to have. So you'll see more coming in the next few months around that.
Okay. But how long do you expect that project to take? Once you start it, you think it'll be done within?
We're planning on having it back to the council for adoption in calendar 26. There's some outreach and engagement we feel is appropriate to do, so we're scoping that now, and then getting into the revisions of the document, and then there'll be an environmental review process associated with it.
Okay. So I, where I am with it is, I'm not opposed to six. I am concerned that if it is not regulated, it could get to six bars, and I think that's something that would be oversaturation. And I think what also has to be recognized in this is, in a conditional use permit, we do have the ability to determine or to, yeah, to determine specifically what type of establishment it will be. Now, we would need to provide some sort of guardrails to help staff because they don't want to, you know, they don't want to have to say, oh, I don't think staff will approve that. We would need to do, you know, help them on, kind of put some guardrails around it. I think the other thing, but we need to recognize that the land use, or excuse me, the conditional use permit, and I may say it wrong, so those who are better lawyerly, go ahead and explain it, but, you know, the conditional use permit lives with the parcel. So if that property, if a wine tasting room is sold to someone else, it has a conditional use permit for a wine tasting room forever. Now, if they say, I want to turn this into a bar, that's a different conversation, right? And further, if you, further, you also have to get a state license for the alcohol as well, and that is something that does not transfer with the property, right? Okay. So if someone was to come in and say, I'm going to do a wine tasting room, and I'm going to turn it into a bar, not only would they have to get a new CUP, correct, or an amendment to their CUP, but they would also have to get a different state license for the liquor, right? So it's a couple hurdles to jump. So I guess what I'm asking to do, or I, you know, ask for a little bit of discussion around it, is to be able to control these a little bit more granularly so that we can keep it such that it's not going to eventually be six bars, right? So I don't know that we need to get to six today. It could be five, maybe. We don't have any, we don't, and to be clear, we don't have anybody sitting and waiting. We've had questions. We've had people asking. We also want to be set up so that we're nimble, and when a good opportunity comes, we don't have to do, you know, we don't have to come back and have another policy conversation. But, you know, maybe, maybe four to five is good enough until after the Old Town Special Planning Review. So I'll park it there.
Councilmember Burr.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so one of the questions that I have on this specific issue really revolves around not just the size of Old Town right now, but the number of facilities or number of restaurants, bars that we have right now. How many are coming down the pipeline? Is there enough space? Those are all things that I think Councilmember Spies had mentioned that I definitely understand. But as we do this, this is really flexibility of adjusting the ordinance up to six, correct? And so with that, that gives us the flexibility and the discretion of awarding CUPs as they come. And that's definitely something that we should all be aware of in that case. Since the discussion took place in November, I know there were several concerns raised by, say, the Old Town Foundation and neighbors in and around the corridor of Elk Grove Boulevard of public safety concerns, public drunkenness, cleanliness. Since that initial discussion that we had here, what discussions have taken place since with those stakeholders and with those neighbors to address their concerns, to make them feel more at ease? Because I saw Table 1, and I see the designations where the cameras are going to be placed, and that is very helpful. One of the things that I'm wondering is that, are we looking at what are perceived to be the blind spots? The alleyways, the back spaces of public parking spots? Can anything be done, if anything can be done, with the help of these cameras that will be installed to help maintain safety in those locations?
So I think, and Chief can chime in here, so I think the cameras with the additional lighting gives us that additional presence in addition to then the staffing recommendations that they gave around having boots on the ground. Certainly, we've not dialed in the specific exact location where each of those cameras or lights would be. We're giving approximate locations in that graphic this evening, and so there'll be additional field review we would have to do, should you so direct. Lighting is an example. There's a full photometric study we'd want to do to see what the correct coverage is. It could be a circumstance where we get out in the field, and because of a tree canopy issue or a building location, we decide instead of one pole, we want to do two or three. And so there's more analysis we'll need to do. It's just a general concept at this point. Chief?
And I would agree. I think a lot of that's going to be the technology we have at the time as well. It's not necessary for us to put or say we need the bodies until we have a full plan in place, because I think that the idea of the technology that we have here in our city really puts us ahead of the game when it comes to a force multiplier. So that would be my approach as well, is let's get a full outline of what needs to be done, but until we actually need that, we have the electronic or technology in place to provide the security we need.
Good deal. And into the question of talking to the folks in the community that are right there, see everything on a day-to-day basis, and those merchants who will be sharing space with these places, and some of them are the merchants or the owners of those places themselves. How have those conversations gone since November?
So we did, again, as I explained in the presentation and provided in the report, we did do additional outreach back to the Historic Preservation Committee and the Old Town Foundation. And as you know, the Old Town Foundation, that group is made up of a good slice of business operators in Old Town. Again, the feedback they provided was that, similar to what I'm hearing from the council this evening, is not necessarily opposed to increasing the cap to six, but did have concerns and wanted to make sure there was some guardrails in place to prevent all those six spots from becoming bars. And in addition to the Old Town Foundation, we did take this to the Historic Preservation Committee, even though that committee represents all of Elk Grove, their focus is Old Town. And again, they shared a different vision for what the future of Old Town could be, and they were not in favor of increasing the cap to six, just because of that overarching vision of the holistic amount of and range of uses within the Old Town Special Planning Area.
Got it. So with, so thank you for those questions, because it looks like, as long as you have the flexibility of expanding, that's always helpful. But one of the things that I've seen, and current and still seeing, is that the number of restaurants that we have and the number of, compared to the number of bars, it feels like we have a lot more bars that are being, that are a part of restaurants. That's always a good thing, in my opinion. But as we look at the bigger picture, as we make room for new places to come in, it's just looking at the capacity, the size of Old Town itself, and just seeing the space, the size, that can actually fit. It's kind of, we want to make sure we're making sure we're putting the facilities in that will, that doesn't make Old Town look oversaturated. But I guess that's part of the evolution and part of the Old Town SPA as that gets amended. Those are things that we can really dive into and discuss. But as far as the amending and creating this ordinance tonight, I'm okay with it. It's just as long as we have the flexibility, as long as we're still talking and still treating it as a living, breathing document that is always subject to be fixed, amended down the road, especially as we're looking at the Old Town SPA, I think is definitely something to keep in front of mind.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Swen.
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't really think three is a huge amount to, and this is a potential three, doesn't mean everybody will rush in and buy it, I mean, apply for it. But at the risk of stating the obvious, Christopher, Jordan, or Antonio, we could always say no to the application that comes in. Is that correct?
Yes, we have discretion over the type of use that comes in, their operations, and again, going back to reviewing it in light of if they do have food service or if it's strictly a bar. We can review it through those lenses.
But even if it was strictly a bar, it's by definition a conditional use permit. We have latitude to revoke and...
Yes, we can make a discretion, it's our discretion to either make a recommendation for approval or denial, or place any number of conditions that we feel would be appropriate that they operate in a safe manner and are a positive addition to the community.
And then to address some issues that were raised by one of the speakers, the, in that review process of your recommendation, you would review this application for a number of things. How would it affect safety and what they were doing?
Safety, security, operations, even who the operator is, what their experience is in operating such a business. And we do the same public outreach as we did for this amendment tonight, outreach to Historic Preservation Committee, the Old Town Foundation, and any other groups that want a presentation.
Right, absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, and I always am wary about trying to anticipate the future, and when we talk about these things, is this, for me, it was a lesson I learned a long time ago on the County's Community Planning Advisory Council, when a Walgreens application came in, we approved it. It was on Laguna and Franklin. And then another Walgreens application came in on Bruceville and Laguna, and I was thinking, why should we allow another Walgreens? It's just so close to one another. And then came a gas station, Chevron on Harbor Point, and then came a Shell gas station, and then came an Arco. Don't we have enough gas stations here? So, you know, the lesson for me was, the market takes care of a lot of these things. You know, people, businesses, whether it's a restaurant, gas station, grocery store, they take a risk, they do analyses, they take a risk in whether or not they want to set up shop. And so it isn't always, you know, incumbent upon us to dictate the winners and losers, because who's to say, maybe I prefer Chevron and you prefer Shell, and so why should we allow Chevron and not Shell, or vice versa? I mean, so those are the kinds of things, it just gets tricky. So, you know, to the, I think the decision here is whether we want to allow Old Town to revitalize what the original intent was for the city, when at least, you know, dating myself now, but I think it was a long time ago, you know...
For the senior here.
Yeah, well, thanks.
Insert a smudge.
Or mine, I don't know. But the, but you know, the discussion around, why we bought the railroad property, why we partnered with the InNest Development to bring in Dust Bowl, was to, in another venture, which, you know, the slalom didn't work out, but we took a chance. The whole point of it was to revitalize Old Town, to turn it into a place that was more lively. And so what we're doing here is we're doing a modest increase, a modest increase, right? Talking about going from three to six, potential. And the safety measures, I think, are still in place, the reviews from staff, the reviews from Planning Commission and others. So I think all of that, those safeguards still remain, and it's not, you know, there's no guarantee it's going to, you know, get overrun with just bars. And it's not, there's no guarantee it's going to, you know, get overrun with just bars. You know, I think Councilmember Spies brought up, you know, the wine, we had a wine tasting establishment that just opened up in our city already. And so I think there's also potential for new things that we haven't even thought of because that's not our bailiwick, that the creatives and the people who want to bring something unique to our community, they're still out there. And so I think providing them an opportunity to do that, to show us that they are worthy of this conditional use permit and being in Old Town and being part of this community. I think, you know, they will come and it's up to them to prove to us that they're you know, they're appropriate for this area. So it's not about necessarily the number, it's about how we influence what we want, we want coming in. So for those reasons, I do support this. And I do want to credit Chief Davis and your analysis and putting additional officers on the street and adding these camera locations here to make everybody feel safer as it stands today and in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Truly appreciate it for letting us know what's occurring, what's happening. Chief, I believe for that photo Andrea showed, that the drone was activated in 45 seconds. It got to...
Yes, actually on that particular call that I think you were talking about, it went from launch point to location in under 40 seconds.
Awesome. That's...
It was about 37 seconds to be exact, but yes.
So I'm assuming from launch point from here to Old Town?
It'll be within that timeline. We will be on scene at most calls, especially critical ones in our city, within a minute. And then able to deploy resources based on what the pilot is seeing, whether it's CFD Fire or for police services.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. And I agree with my council colleagues, Councilman Spies and Councilman Sun. The guardrails and the guidelines are already there. The reality is we can't say what the market's going to look like. There's restaurants that are closing left and right and within the Sacramento region. And I know we're looking particularly in Old Town. I believe and I agree with our city staff that we want to create an economic activity down in that area. And with that, I'm full support of it and I'm willing to make the motion.
All right. My turn to talk though. You can make the motion though. So thank you to my colleagues. Great comments, great presentation. I too support going from three to six. I think the biggest concerns that I heard from folks was really centered around safety and lighting. And those two central issues have been addressed. In terms of economic development and driving the, you know, visitors to Old Town and revitalizing that, that has been something that, you know, we've all been very passionate about. And I think we do have many guardrails already in place that as we go through the process, as we see the applications, if they're not the right fit, we have opportunities to raise those concerns. But having that flexibility now so that we don't have to revisit it again, which can be challenging sometimes, so I definitely am in full support. And I appreciate the attention to the safety concerns and the lighting. Those two go hand in hand. So more patrols, more eyes and ears. And then, of course, the lighting will make a big difference. And those meet really the central concerns from the people that I heard most. They weren't opposed to having, you know, going from three to six. They were just mostly concerned about the safety of the area because we do want a mix, we do want families to go there. And if there's restaurants, not everyone's going to be drinking, obviously, but if there's restaurants, then the age is different. It's not just over 21. So we want to have that flexibility and those opportunities exist so that we can help revitalize this beautiful part of our city. So with that, now I will look for a motion. Did you make that motion, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
We got to give them a little bit of a...
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we will move on to our next item, 8.2.
Good evening, Mayor. Sarah Kirchkeßner, Elk Grove Planning Department. The project consists of a general plan amendment, both text and map, a rezone, a tentative subdivision map, and subdivision design review. The project also includes a tree permit and a determination of consistency with the general plan for the abandonment of existing right-of-way. The project site is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of West Stockton Boulevard and Denish Road. The site is currently undeveloped. The site is bounded by West Stockton Boulevard to the east and Denish Road to the north. Surrounding, existing land uses include single-family residence to the north across Denish Road, the Laguna Gateway Shopping Center to the south and east across West Stockton Boulevard, State Route 99 further to the east, and large lot single-family residences and the Elk Grove Laguna Creek to the west. The Planning Commission reviewed the project on January 16th earlier this year. One resident spoke in opposition to the development project generally and questioned if the project proposed apartments. In response, staff did note that the project consists of single-family residential and does not include apartments. And the Planning Commission recommended City Council approve the project five to zero. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment to modify the land use designation of the site from regional commercial to medium-density residential and parks open space. The project proposes to rezone the project site accordingly from shopping center to RD 10 as well as open space. The project proposes medium-density residential development, which is consistent with policies of the general plan, policies LU 2-3 and LU 2-4, which includes infill development in areas identified on the general plan as well as compatibility with the surrounding area and increases housing diversity. The project also includes a general plan amendment to modify Table 8-4 to be discussed later on in this presentation. The tentative subdivision map would subdivide the project site into 111 single-family lots as well as two landscape lots, including a pedestrian paseo. The project's density is nine dwelling units per acre. And the map is consistent with the general plan municipal code design guidelines with the proposed general plan amendment and rezone. The south side of Denish Road is proposed to be constructed with a separated sidewalk and the lots fronting onto Denish Road. Pedestrian connectivity is provided to Denish Road through the end of Court 3 as well as a paseo to West Stockton Boulevard at the southeast corner of the site. The project also includes an off-site improvement, which would extend the sidewalk from the project site along the south side of Denish Road to the west. The project site is adjacent to existing transportation and non-transportation noise sources, specifically Highway 99 to the east and Home Depot's loading dock at the southwest corner of the site. A noise study was completed for the project to verify compliance with the general plan policies and standards. The general plan, Table 8-4, identifies the maximum noise level for new projects affected by non-transportation noise sources, such as the Home Depot loading area. The daytime standard is 55 decibels and the nighttime standard is 45 decibels. The applicant is proposing to modify footnote D to give the city flexibility when there are site-specific conditions or considerations as determined applicable by the designated approving authority, in this case, the City Council, for new projects affected by existing non-transportation noise sources. And the proposed text amendment is shown here in underline and strike through. The proposed general plan amendment would provide the city flexibility in applying increased noise level standards for new developments, including this project, due to existing conditions near a project site. This flexibility would be beneficial for infill development projects similar to this. The project's onsite conditions and considerations include the infrequency, location, and timing of the noise exceedances, construction measures, and disclosure statements recorded on the property. The construction of a 12-foot sound wall along the affected portion of the project boundary, as shown here in this exhibit, would reduce noise levels by 15 decibels, which would reduce the nighttime noise levels on the project site to 45 decibels for the majority of the time. Any exceedances would be minor and frequent and would occur during periods when backyard usage is at a minimum. The recommended mitigation measures include construction of the sound wall ranging from six to 12 feet, sound-rated windows, as I mentioned, disclosure statements that would notify future residences of the potential for elevated noise levels during Home Depot operations, and air conditioning units on the site. With implementation of the measures described, the project is consistent with the revised general plan noise standard as proposed. The project also includes a tree permit for the removal of three trees of local importance. And these were recommended for removal for public safety reasons by the project arbitrist. The project includes the abandonment of eight feet of right-of-way on the south side of Denish Road that is no longer needed. Denish Road was previously dedicated as a 50-foot right-of-way and the current standard only requires 42 feet. The proposed abandonment is consistent with the general plan as well as the city's improvement standards. An initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project, which determined that the project would not result in a significant environmental impact that could not be mitigated. And mitigation measures were incorporated to reduce potential impacts to a less than significant level. The city received six comment letters total, four during the public review period and two after the close of the comment period. And the comments do not alter the conclusions of the initial study as described in the staff report. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the project. And I am available for any questions as well as the environmental consultant on the project. And the applicant team is also available to answer questions tonight.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Just want to thank staff for getting us to this point. It's been a long road for us. We're very happy that we're here in front of you for consideration this evening. Any questions, like Sarah mentioned, we're here to answer. So feel free to shoot once we get to that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak on this. I will close public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is not closed. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, just one question. Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, is the, for the sound walls on the areas that are higher in decibel, I think up to 12, but is it, is it six foot on the, from the house side and then 12 it on the Home Depot side or? I didn't see a section in here, so I was just curious.
I'll put up the exhibit that shows it.
Oh, okay.
So this exhibit on the right shows the sound wall starting at the southern boundary, at the southwest boundary. It's 12 feet and then it steps down towards Denish Road. So it would be 12 feet on both sides of...
Oh, okay. So it's even ground on both?
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Any other questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I will look for a motion one through three.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, 9.1.
And 9.1 is to receive an update on establishing the name of the new zoo at Elk Grove Project. Consider a resolution establishing the name of the facility.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Kara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. I'm going to be providing an update on establishing the name of the new zoo at Elk Grove Project. On January 22nd, a potential name was presented to the City Council for the new zoo. That was the Greater Sacramento Zoo at Elk Grove. The City Council provided comments back regarding Elk Grove should be more prominent given the city's financial contribution, the location of the zoo, as well as the opportunity to strengthen the city's brand. Two names that were discussed at that meeting on January 22nd was the Elk Grove Zoo of Greater Sacramento and the Elk Grove Zoo of Sacramento. I'd like to talk for a minute about the project's economic impacts. As you know, this is a transformative opportunity for the city as well as the region. There are short-term as well as long-term economic benefits. Over five years, it is estimated that the zoo will bring in $249 million in economic impact and produce 395 jobs. Regarding the zoo funding sources, sources are both legal, local, as well as regional. If you look at the bottom of this table, the city's share is 61.4% of the project and the society and regional share is 38.6. So this just underscores the local and regional nature of this project.
Sorry, Kara. Can you go back for a second? I know, I just want to clarify, we're talking for, this is phase one?
This is phase 1A and 1B.
1B. There's a whole second phase, right?
Yes.
So there's phase 1C, which is the balance of Africa.
Right.
Zone 2, California. Zone 3 is an office building that makes room then for phase 4, which is Australasia.
Right. And just want to, because my recollection was the entire project is double, is 600 million.
We don't have a full cost estimate for build-out of all four phases. We focused on getting to opening day of the phase 1A, 1B complex.
When we approved this project, how many months ago?
May 8th.
May of last year, the total estimate was 600 million, as I remember.
I'd have to go back and confirm if we had a number in there.
We had a number in there. That's why, I just want to clarify because I I see this all the time and I feel like we keep talking about 300 million. And we're not in it to build one or two phases. We're in this to build the whole thing. And that's, to me, in my mind, that's what we are obligating our residents to. That's the decision. I'm not saying, you know, it's a good decision, but I'm saying that is the decision. And so I just wanted to clarify, because it doesn't say one, phase 1A or whatever. I just want to clarify, this is only part of the project, right? That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So feedback that we received on January 22nd from the society, as well as after the City Council meeting, was that it's very important to the Sacramento Zoological Society that the name is included in Sacramento Zoo in its entirety. So this is to honor the long legacy and history in the region of the zoo, recognize the societies and the regions' contributions to the project, preserve brand identity, and support fundraising efforts and attendance, particularly outside of the region. So given the City Council feedback on January 22nd, as well as feedback from the society, staff is recommending the name Elk Grove Sacramento Zoo. Depending on final branding and marketing, the Dash Mayor may not remain. And the branding would complement both names. So why Elk Grove Sacramento Zoo? This name recognizes both parties' concerns and priorities, the city's financial contribution, the location of the zoo, the historical Sacramento Zoo brand, broad regional economic impacts, and regional funding components. So it is staff's recommendation that the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the naming of the new zoo at Elk Grove as Elk Grove Sacramento Zoo. And that's the conclusion of my presentation.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I'll open up public comment. I have Ray Jim Reynolds, followed by Robert Churchill.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm RJ Reynolds.
Welcome back.
Yeah, yeah. I'm really pleased to be here. However, I'm going to do the same thing my cousin merchant of death did earlier and ask for the $2,500 contribution back for all the reasons he gave. However, I'm here to speak to what happened at the last meeting on January 22nd, when the city manager said that the Zoological Society will be required to hand over 50 million in cash by, you know, January of 2027. However, page three of the staff report, and by the way, it's page seven in the current report, so you can look at it there. It says officially posted that cash commitment can be met with... be met with written pledges. So, there's, there's a contradiction here, and what you say and what's in writing seem to contradict. And Mr. Spees and Mr. Soon both said at the last meeting, oh, yeah, you know, like, well, first of all, Mr., I don't want to mischaracterize what was said, but Mr. Spees, you, I recall you saying that you were concerned about getting that cash in hand, and Mr. Soon, you were concerned about the lion's share being paid, not 60% or anything, but probably closer to 90% of this being paid for by the taxpayers here, me and others, the folks that live here. And so, and if you look at the, the, the numbers, that at least are online regarding the Zoological Society and its assets, it only has 24 million in assets, and their net income is a hundred, is a million dollars a year. And so, based on that, those numbers, the, without inflation adjustments, the Sacramento Zoological Society, if it did it on its own, would be able to afford this project in the year 24, 25, and if, in fact, it's going to cost 600 or 800 or a billion dollars, we're talking about 1,000 years. So, it's absurd. This is crazy, and, you know, the only name I can come up with is exotic animal prison, really, because to lock up beautiful animals like, oh, you know, maybe we ought to have Kevin Bell show up. That's the problem. Kevin Bell hasn't shown up. You know, the guy from the Lincoln Park Zoo, that the Zoological Society touted, and I realize I'm up against the clock here, but where's Kevin Bell? Who is Kevin Bell? Why is Kevin Bell saying good things about this zoo, and he doesn't even live here? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Robert Churchill, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Robert Churchill. I am the interim CEO of the Sacramento Zoological Society. I'm also a 30-year resident of Elk Grove, but here on behalf of the society tonight to state that we support the proposed name, and we appreciate the responsiveness and the spirit of collaborative effort over the past couple of weeks to bring this name forward today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lynn Wheat, followed by Randy Becker.
Well, I think that the zoo should be the Elk Grove Taxpayer Mellow Roos slash Sacramento Zoo. But I want to talk about something else that's related to this. In a previous meeting, Councilmember Spees requested that the city manager clearly state that no on-site construction of the zoo would begin unless the city had received the full 50 million cash on deposit from the Zoological Society. While the city manager confirmed this, I feel that his response may have been a little misleading, and I wanted to clarify for the record. As far back as the City Council staff report of June 26, 2024, page four, it has been stated that the Zoological Society may utilize debt financing to satisfy any portion of the 50 million owed to the city. The city has also gone so far as to facilitate this by offering to wrap this into their own bond issue, taxpayer issue. So while the city manager is technically correct that the city would have the 50 million on deposit, it needs to be clarified that a portion of this could be in the form of debt that the Zoological Society would be required to pay back with interest. Ultimately, however, the bond will be issued in the city's name, and if the Zoological Society fails to meet their full obligation, the Elk Grove taxpayers and their general fund are the payees of the last resort. I just wanted to have this on the record to help fully answer Councilmember Spees's questions from a few meetings back. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Randy Becker.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, we're no longer a cowtown, as we were told earlier. We're city. And therefore, since we are city, as I've stated a number of times, I do support the zoo. As a taxpayer and someone who's representing taxpayers, because we've had three up here tonight, I'm the third, and I hate to put it in this context, but Sacramento council mayor's business deserted the zoo. They chose a different path. They had plenty of opportunities for decades to save the zoo. And we had an opportunity, or at least put our hand out, to give them an opportunity to save the zoo. Sacramento didn't care less, because if they did, we wouldn't be talking here tonight. It would be in, it would be in the Thomas, in the Ashby area. Not a potential hospital that may never be built. They don't want the zoo. So, you know, when Arco Arena was built, names were changed, but no matter, if you talk to somebody, where are you going? We're going to Arco Arena. Now it's Golden One, because it's downtown. But I'm sure if it names change in the future, it'll still be known as the Golden One Arena. Now, back to a name. I've lived most of my life in Elk Grove, and I've seen a lot of changes, and I would be surprised if I lived long enough to see the zoo built. But I'll tell you one thing, the zoo needs to be called the Elk Grove Zoo. Now, if you want to add Sacramento region in the Sacramento area, that's fine, but it needs to be called the Elk Grove Zoo, because it's moving to Elk Grove. Sacramento deserted the zoo. If they did, they would have already had the money. They'd have had the money in the bank, and you would have been digging dirt, because the money would have been there, but it's not. It's not, because those politicians up north don't care. If they did, the money would be there. The name needs to be to represent our city. We're paying for it. If they want the name Sacramento, they need to increase their, their fund, period. And you're going to find that all over Elk Grove.
Thank you, sir.
Have them put it out and ask.
Thank you. That concludes our speaker list, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and open it up for discussions. We'll start to our left with Councilmember Spees.
Okay. Great.
Started this.
I know, I did.
It's a good thing, though.
Thank you, thank you. I, I mean, look, I, I, all I wanted to do earlier was, was mention that we're building a whole zoo, right? That's all I'm saying. And, and so, not, I'm not taking away what the Zoological Society, they are great partners, great people who are passionate about the facility, and, you know, please, no disrespect intended. And I know, I think what they want is, and I'm just going to reiterate what, a little bit what I said last time, was because of new meeting and all, look, I totally appreciate the Sacramento Zoo, with my family in that area for 100 years, nearly 100 years, me growing up there, me bringing my kids there. I totally appreciate the zoo and all it had to offer, and the memories that me and my kids will always have. We are transitioning. We're transitioning, and it will be something amazing. It will be something amazing when it gets done. And so I don't mind having a collaborative, you know, collaborative name, and we, you know, we started, all I did was switch around the name to Elk Grove Zoo of Greater Sacramento, right? So, but I, you know, we're partners, so I'm willing to compromise. I think what staff proposed is, is a good compromise, has, it does have Elk Grove first, which I think a lot of Elk Grove residents would, would appreciate, keep Sacramento the name to, for the nostalgia. And I like the idea of getting rid of the Dash and putting, you know, whichever cherished, you know, animal we choose, it could be an elk for that matter, or, you know, any animal, lion, whatever, but I think that would be kind of a neat marketing thing, too, to have Elk Grove a great, a nice animal, whether, you know, the rhino would be a good one, too, Sacramento and then zoo. So I would be fine with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm in agreement with the name, and that's just where I'll leave it.
Short and sweet. Councilmember Brewer?
No, I like the, the name of Elk Grove Sacramento Zoo, and, but if, and if we go a little further, it should be a picture with Jay Gregory, top hat monocle. And that makes it complete.
Thanks.
Councilmember Spees.
I must have missed that reference somewhere.
Jay Gregory is the rhino. You should come meet him. He's pretty cute.
Oh, gotcha. Be right there. Okay, so, at first, I thought about, okay, Elk Grove, California Zoo, all right? And I thought, it's a little bit awkward, right? And I think eventually it might become truncated, right? But my belief is that if it becomes truncated, then it'll likely be Elk Grove Zoo, right? Although I do, I do give, you know, deference, of course, and respect to the history of the Sacramento Zoo, and I think it's important to recognize that it isn't necessarily about the city of Sacramento, it is about the brand of Sacramento Zoo, right? There's, there's kind of two separate pieces there. I think, I think we could all agree that if Sacramento wanted to keep it, they could have, right? But it isn't about that. The other thing that I look at is that Elk Grove is about, I mean, I guess, one-fourth the size of Sacramento, right? But together, I think, in, in maybe less than 20 years, Sacramento and Elk Grove may be known as a metropolis, right, or a metroplex, I should say, much like Minneapolis-St. Paul or Dallas-Fort Worth, right? And so I think that that's actually, the Elk Grove Sacramento Zoo actually works out pretty well. So, it's something we can work with. I think that it gives respect to both parties. I think it's a little bit long, it may not be the best name from a branding perspective, but I can support it, so.
Thank you. I agree, I actually love the name, and it's a great compromise, and I really want to thank and appreciate the Sacramento Zoological Society's partnership in this. I trust that you have reserved all of those necessary domains, so that, you know, when the time comes, we have all of those saved. I think that that's going to be important. But, you know, I do agree with what Councilmember Spees is saying, as we grow as a region, it's very likely going to be blended, so this, you know, I hadn't even thought about this, but this actually does lend itself to that blend in the future as this great metropolis. But this is an excellent compromise, and it's a lot shorter than it was, so we have four words. So, and last time, it was, it was a lot longer, so, you know, I'm playing all of the wordsmithing. I think at the end of the day, we have a nice name, we have a good brand, we're able to market that, and that's really key. Most importantly, we finally have a name.
Yeah.
So I absolutely support this. So with that, I'll take a motion.
One, one quick comment?
Yes.
I just want to be sure, for clarity's sake, that folks don't get it twisted. I am not suggesting that Sacramento and Elk Grove will become one city. That is certainly, that is certainly not in the conversation. I'm simply stating that, like, there are cities that have two cities, like Dallas and Fort Worth, and Minneapolis and St. Paul, that they're often referred to together.
Yes, we're not purchasing Sacramento like Greenland.
Right. I just want to be sure that nobody got my word twisted. I'd like to make the motion to adopt a resolution for the Elk Grove Sacramento Zoo.
I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Congratulations. We have a name. Thank you. All right, so we will move on to our next item, 9.2.
Let's receive the, oh, sorry, I will not jump on there. Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor, members of the City Council, inviting Measure E Oversight Committee Chair Hollis Herb to present the Measure E Annual Report from the Measure E Citizens Oversight Committee.
Could you open my slides for me?
I'll get that. Sorry, my system was just cycling, so, here we go. I think I've got it.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Necessary. Here we go.
Hi. Good to see you, Hollis.
Great to see you, too, Darren. Well, Madam Mayor, and City Councilman, my name is Hollis Herb. I chair the Measure E Citizens Oversight Committee, and I'm here tonight to give you the required annual report of the committee to City Council. Let's see if I get this all right. The quick overview of Measure E, it's a 1% sales tax that would, that the community self-imposed. It can, the revenues can only be spent in Elk Grove. The proceeds are shared between the city and the communities, the Sunnis Community Services District. The funds spending are prioritized through community-identified needs and priorities, and I have been extremely grateful that the staffs of both the city and CSD have been very careful to present all requests with great care to explain how that particular request aligns with one of the, at least one of the particular priorities. The funding priorities were found by many interactions with the community, and the top priorities were pulled out of that. A few of them were bundled together under what is generally considered crime reduction and rapid response. The city established a sub-fund within their general fund for Measure E revenues, and CSD Would you advance for me? Established a separate funding stream so that they can, they can tell what is going on with it. The next...
Back up one.
Thank you. The committee has four obligations, four charges. One is to review the revenues and the expenditures of funds. One is to review the annual independent financial audits, both of the city and of CSD. Very important to the review of the allocation of funding, though, is to identify that the funding requests are consistent with the priorities as identified by the community. This is, we consider to be extremely important. And then our fourth charge is annually, we then come to City Council to give our report, and this is our first-ever annual report to City Council. The members of the committee are myself, we have two other committee members still here tonight, Judy, Judy Covington, and Brett, you still here? Stand up, Brett. And Brett Bartholomew. The other members are Valerie Irwin, who serves as the vice chair, Helena Madera Silmi, Harmendar Singh Kangura, and Alan Vito III. And we represent, I don't know how the mayor managed this, but there is a great background variety here with all of these people, and it's been an extremely interesting committee. The committee accomplishments are, we attended four meetings so far, and the very first meeting ever was in May, just before the very first Measure E program fiscal year. In February of... In February of 2024, we met to receive progress reports and at that time, requests for additional allocations in line with the community identified priorities. What had happened was, in May, if you think about it before the next fiscal year, we don't really know for sure what's going to be spent as a tax measure, as a sales tax. And the best guess in May of '23 was, I'm rounding, about $22 million. And the allocations were consistent with that. By the February '24 meeting, it had turned out that we were told, now it looks like we can spend up to, we will receive up to $28 million, go ahead with additional allocations. We received numerous requests that primarily extended the existing programs, especially those that involved a lot of staff. Then we had our third meeting just before the next fiscal year, the '24-'25 fiscal year. And we were told at that time that the first-year Measure E tax monies actually come closer to $34 million. So it's been an amazing thing to see for the city right now. We just came off a few weeks ago from our January '25 meeting, where we reviewed the annual independent fiscal audits of both the city and of CSD. So we fulfilled that charge because it was lovely seeing that both audits got clean And me being here tonight, supported by other committee members and by the staff that has been so helpful, and big kudos, please, to brand new, practically brand new Assistant City Manager Jackie Guzman, because she got sort of thrown into this very, very rapidly and has just been aces in setting all of these up for me, even if the little remote didn't work at the end. One more. We're going to go on to what sort of revenues we had in a little bit more detail in some of the allocations. Thanks very much, Jason, for being there. The allocation by sort of agreements and contracts between the city and CSD are, the city takes off 20% for reserves of whatever these tax revenues represent in a fiscal year. And the city of Elk Grove has 50%, and the Kasumi's Community Services District has 30%, which by, I think it's a formal contract with the city, provides 20% of the total take. Felipe's not here any longer to the, you see, there he is, back there. The Elk Grove Fire Department, huge public safety issues. The Elk Grove Fire Department gets 20% of the total Measure E revenue, and then Parks and Recreation under CSD get the remaining 10%. The actual that are on here are a little bit confusing, and I would like to move on to the next slide, please. And then I'll get back to the actual spending, okay? The first thing to notice on the slide is on the left-hand side, you will see the community priorities under which we are operating right now. And the top one here is placed on the top for a reason. If you look across any lines into any one of the monetary columns and compare what's in the adopted budget for crime reduction and rapid response, and then look at the total at the bottom of that same column, you'll see that a major portion of the funding has gone to what the community has indicated is the biggest deal within this project. But the others are easy to read here, I hope, and you will see that in every type of budgetary category, every one of the community priorities has been addressed with at least some of the Measure E funding. That is an indication of how well the staffs of both organizations have worked on this additional source of funding. I call your attention to the adopted budget, which is the first monetary column. That budget was created at the time when we didn't have any experience whatsoever yet. I mean, it's before the revenues actually began. And so that budget was modified eight or nine months later with the fiscal year '23-'24 revised budget. Again, what happened primarily was within the same priority categories, we were able to add more money because what had been forecast to be, try it at the beginning for 22 million, became 28 million. Then there is the final column on this page. And that column looks very different right now, and I think that there's a couple easy explanations for that. Our startup year was indeed a startup year. New programs were planned, pilot studies were begun, and a major hiring campaign went on for both the Elk Grove Fire Department and the Elk Grove Police Department. And by the time the right personnel could be identified, hired, and then put together at the same time in police and fire academies, it took a long time. There's a great deal of other spending that went to specialized equipment for below, for both the police and fire departments. But I have been led to, to believe that both organizations are very carefully monitoring, especially their special vehicles and all the special equipment, and have plans for the replacement cycle. It's not going to be that we're buying almost three dozen vehicles for the almost three dozen new hires every year. And of course, some of the new hires, like the dispatchers, don't need that kind of, that kind of equipment. The next slide is going to have the exact same community priority column and the exact same total column with a little bit more detail in between, if you'd help me, please. Now this sorts out how the city and CSD explicitly did their spendings. You'll see that the city spent in seven of the eight priority categories. You left parks to CSD. CSD picked up parks, plus three other of the categories. So there's been a real dedication to trying to address what the community said they wanted. Jason, please. The community's cumulative year-end totals at the beginning of the first fiscal year and the, and then into the, into the next fiscal year seem very different, but it's just, it's just the way it happened. You don't get the revenues back immediately from the state, and the, the spending wasn't done at the very beginning of the fiscal year. A quick slide, just saying again, we have done our charge for the '23-'24 fiscal year and are happily able to tell you that both the city and CSD got clean financial audits. Then I'd like to go to the next slide, please. We have now several Measure E highlights in terms of the spending. Please. The first one talks explicitly about the fact that there are 32 additional public safety positions between the police and fire departments. And that is the extraordinary commitment, and Chief Rodriguez referred to some of this earlier in his talk with you tonight. Then there are some really cool additional one-offs for now, I like to call them, where modern technology that enhances public safety is being addressed with some of the Measure E funds. Homelessness has been addressed, we're proud to report that, from Sarah Bontrager and her people, that there was indeed a 24-hour winter shelter that could manage at least 30 individuals at a time. There's been groundwork laid for other forms of, of shelters. There are motel vouchers and new homeless navigator. You folks can read this. A lot has been done towards homelessness. For enhancing the prevention of youth crime and youth gangs, both the city and CSD have hired new people and added additional programs. For maintaining streets and parks and traffic conditions, and this is three, three of the eight community priorities all bundled together on one slide, there have been several projects begun, at least one of them's already completed. Economic development had its portion of these funds. Some of these will be ongoing. And I would like to especially note that I felt it was really lovely to see that there were some initial requests for funding, especially under economic development, that didn't pan out for certain reasons. And the staffs just said, this isn't going to work for such and such a reason, and so we're not going to waste the funds. And I think that that is great fiscal responsibility. Clean and safe public air, public areas is being addressed, especially with targeting graffiti and trash, and the authority for CSD to hire a fourth full-time park ranger. The next steps, as I am told, are that you folks with CSD will be having a retreat to consider issues, including Measure E. Then you will tell your staffs what to, what to ask us for, for next, for the next fiscal year's continued funding. We have met in January of this year, and we've already begun seeing some funding sources, but I don't, can't tell you what the, what the actual amounts are going to be for the '24-'25 year. This is the '23-'24 report. Nevertheless, what I am assured of and will say to you is that for all the funds that were not spent out of that wonderful 34 million, they simply came over into the '24-'25 fiscal year. And they came over in basically the same categories, according to the staff requests, with the same priorities, and they will be augmenting whatever '24-'25 funding comes in. As it slowly trickles in, we get a good start on '24-'25, to report to you also. Our next step for the committee, now that we will have done our annual report to you, our first one ever, is that we are meeting again in May, and we will be reviewing the '25-'26 reports, get the updates on the '24-'25, see whether there's anything to augment the early sessions or timings of '25-'26. And the chair and the vice chair are considered two-year terms, so we will have, we will have new elections. And as for that, my final slide is to thank you and my willingness to answer any questions that you have. I will point out that you have a 24-page packet. That includes, in great detail, the different kinds of programs that were funded in the '23-'24 fiscal year. And I will urge you to remember again that sometimes when it looks awkward that the funding doesn't line up, it's because there are changes in what's coming in and what we are told to expect and let ourselves go ahead and allocate, allocate. But also, a key on some of the columns will be, this is the money spent in this fiscal year that was generated in the fiscal year, and that's a very different issue from the total monies that did get spent from generation in the fiscal year. I think that our rhythm is going to be May meetings and then something around a January meeting henceforth. It takes a while for the boards to meet, set the priorities for staff, the staff to decide what the wish lists are, and it then come back in time for us to agree to the allocations, meeting the community priorities, just in time to begin the possibility of spending in the newest fiscal year. And then we will have an update early each calendar year so that we can review both the progress reports, any additional funding requests, but also the annual budget audits, which are part of our requirement. So again, Mayor Singh Allen, thank you for my appointment to this committee, and thank you for also appointing such wonderful people. And I would like to say again my great appreciation for the efforts of the staffs of both the city and CSD, wherever Amanda might be, and Chief Rod, there's Amanda and Chief Rodriguez. They have taken it to heart. It's a new thing for all of us, and everything we get has the community priority sort of labeled on it so that we know what we should look for it fitting to. And every time we have made a request for some help in how the presentations from staff will go, these have been incorporated. And when, to my delight, I discovered that the staff had already begun creating a backed, a two-sided color flyer, which is in your packets also, and we made a few change requests, they showed up. It's just been a wonderful thing. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I wish to address any of your questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just going to add a couple of things. I wanted to specifically call out that there is, the ending fund balance for Measure E has been growing, and so we have not allocated all of the funding that has been coming in. Besides the reserve, there is a pot of money of unrestricted funding that is available to program. And so those, that's one thing that we will talk in more detail when we go to the council retreat, is opportunities for using these one-time dollars that we know are sitting there in the unrestricted fund balance. So we'll, we'll continue, we'll give you an update using the estimates from fiscal year '24-'25 and have that discussion at the council retreat. Tonight, what we're asking you is to, of course, receive the Measure E annual report, but also to review and provide feedback on the draft annual Measure E community report, which is the, the flyer that Chair Hollis was referring to. That is something that will go out in the Elk Grove newsletter to community members.
I'm sorry, I don't, I, we don't have a slide for that, but it, it is in your 24-page packet.
Excellent. Well, at this time, I will open up public comment. I don't have anyone signed up. I'll close public comment. And really thank you and all of the committee members. And really thank you and all of the committee members for your dedication and service. Having this oversight committee was very important to this council and our residents as we passed this very important sales tax measure. And hearing that it's $34 million, wow, that's quite remarkable. That's not something we anticipated when we initially forecasted, so this is great news. Questions, comments? I'll start to the right this time. Mr. Spies, anything?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Hollis. I appreciate that, of your work. It's good to see that we've got you in the right place, right? After many different times and different places, glad to see that happening.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank the rest of the members. It takes time out of your lives, and it's not always the most exciting to look at these numbers and go through them all. But the members of the public asked for this tax increase, and they asked for citizen oversight. And so you're conducting a very important job. And so I appreciate the time that you and the rest of the committee have placed into it, as well as we're very happy to have you, Ms. Guzman, taking the reins and leading this from staff perspective. I also know that it's also a big lift for our finance, preparing all of these reports behind. So to all my finance peeps out there, thank you for doing what you do. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Brewer, did you have anything?
Yeah. Thank you, Hollis.
You're welcome, Ryan.
It's like all the years we've worked together on different things, the one thing I've noticed is your passion, your focus, and your leadership.
Thank you, Ryan.
And the work that the people on your committee do, they have that same commitment, that same passion, that same focus. And I want to thank you, Ms. Judy, and I want to thank you, Brett, for being a part of that process, along with the other members, because Measure E, as we know, was designed to make sure that the city and CSD had resources available in lieu of hard times. And to see the funds going through there and also notice the focus that, as committee members, the seriousness that you took into it is exemplary, because it is making a difference.
Good.
And we see it in everything we do, up and down the board throughout the city. And to work with our finance team and to make sure that the audits were clean also matters, because it shows the accountability that was built into this measure when it came about. So this was a great first report. Really appreciate it. And I really appreciate that Measure E is working, but it's working because we have an oversight committee that is looking at this and looking at it with the degree of seriousness and passion that it deserves. And you're doing it on behalf of the entire Elk Grove community, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Councilmember Sooton.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Hollis.
Hey, Darren.
I also want to echo my thanks to you and the entire committee for all your work in keeping us on track, making sure that how we spend the money is how we said we were going to spend the money. And so echoing those sentiments of my colleagues before me, but adding on to Councilmember Brewer, you know, these monies were also intended to allow us to set ourselves up for the future, whether it was economic opportunity or also to address our homelessness here in the city. So you can see the expenditures here, and then with our shelter that we've since set up. So our having this additional resource is really enabling us to service our residents for today, but also preparing for the future. And again, thank you for making sure that we are expending the monies as we committed to. Thank you.
You're welcome. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Chair, thank you for your hard work. Thanks to everyone for their hard work on Measure E. You know, you don't have to go too far. You can just go to the Costco and start seeing all the cars over there, right? Everyone's buying in our city, and because of that, we get to reinvest, which is one of the main things that we're doing this. And it's obviously for our public safety as well. And we're grateful to be working in conjunction with CSD and our police. So thank you for everything you're doing.
You're welcome. Thank you, and I'll just thank everyone for their service. We're very appreciative. Have a good evening.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you. All right, next item.
It's item 9.3, to receive an update on the workforce readiness certification program.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for having me today. I'm Sarah Rodriguez, your Economic Development Analyst, and I'm here today to talk to you about our workforce readiness certification program, also known as our work program. So our recommendation tonight is that you receive an update on the workforce readiness certification program and provide some direction to staff. So to start it off, let's give you some background information regarding the program. So in 2015, the city began offering workforce development services to businesses upon request. So this looked like anything from market analysis to local and regional workforce, connecting people to our partners in workforce development, hosting job fairs, things of that sort. So we've been in the workforce development game for some time now. But then in 2020, the COVID-19 pandemic negatively impacted our residents and our businesses. So in response, the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA, a $1.9 trillion federal stimulus bill, was signed into law on March 11, 2021. The city received $21,944,605 of those dollars. And then the city's COVID-19 Economic Recovery Task Force identified funding workforce development programs, specifically training programs, as a priority response to the pandemic. So on August 11, 2021, council adopted the ARPA expenditure allocation plan, which did include $2 million for workforce development, specifically to assist residents that were unemployed and underemployed. So in 2022, staff prepared an RFP for workforce development training and certification services that were... We did this for healthcare, information technology, and manufacturing, but ultimately, we received favorable proposals from information technology and manufacturing. So on February 22, 2023, council authorized $353,158 to have a contract with CyberProud Inc., and this was to train our residents in information technology and those types of fields. There was so much interest that we actually amended the contract in September 2023, if you remember. We add in additional $757,350 to total it to about $1.1 million. And we also extended the contract to the end of 2025. So this contract is still active. On March 8, 2023, council authorized another contract, $304,261, to Sacramento City Unified School District's Charles A. Jones Career and Education Center, and this was to train our Elk Grove residents in the fields of manufacturing. That contract did expire in January 31, 2025, so earlier this year. Both contracts with CyberProud for the information technology fields and with Charles A. Jones in the manufacturing fields totals to about $1.4 million. So now that I've given you some background on the program, let's now talk about the results of those two contracts, starting with our technology programs. So currently, we have 68 graduated, sorry, 68 residents have graduated from the CyberProud training, with another 48 that are currently enrolled, and those 48 will graduate this week. So happy graduation to you all. Enrollment is divided among these categories. So we had 38 in cybersecurity, 18 in infrastructure support, 12 in software development, 19 in a broader future-ready program, and 29 in data analytics. To date, 12 graduates have secured technology-specific employment in the region, so that equates to 17% of our graduates. Some of those employers include Volt, which is a temp agency, California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. That is an Elk Grove business. PDC Technology, California Department of Public Health, just to name a couple of them. To date, $665,609 of the contract has been paid, equating to that $60,510 per job placement as of now. This can obviously change with those graduates going into the field, into the market, and we anticipate spending the full amount of the 1.1 approximately for that contract. Now shifting gears towards manufacturing, to date, 73 residents have graduated from Charles A. Jones training programs. And this is seven from the Manufacturing Technician Program. That's an eight-month program. One from Introduction to Manufacturing, that's a three-week program. One in Material Handling and Logistics, that's a one-week program. And then 64 from forklifting. And the reason I kind of mentioned that, the duration of those programs, is for this next slide. So these numbers are not including forklifting. The reason why is the vast majority of those happened in the last two months, so they haven't really had that time to see if they're going to gain employment based on that training. So six graduates, not including forklifting, have secured manufacturing-specific employment in the region, so that equates to 55% of the non-forklift graduates. And some of their employers include G&amp;B, which is a Elk Grove business, Siemens Mobility and Insight Manufacturing Services, to name a couple. Our final expenditure is expected to be $217,985. So of this amount, $207,000 has been for non-forklifting training, and so that equates to that $23,083 per job placement for non-forklifting. All right. So the city was required to obligate ARPA funding by the end of 2024, and that funding must be spent by the end of 2026. And no additional ARPA funds are available or forthcoming. So the key question for you all is, with the pending conclusion of ARPA and the recent expiration of the Charles A. Jones contract, are we continuing with the current form of the work program? Or are we pivoting or ending it? So in summary, both our CyberProud and Charles A. Jones partners have done a tremendous job in upskilling our residents. They're here today, and they've done so at no cost to our city. So a small portion of that subset has found related employment, but an even smaller portion has found Elk Grove-specific employment. So the current approach, and our service providers will agree, hasn't proved to be the most efficient to help with the hiring needs of our businesses, obviously has done a lot for our residents. And it would be even less a cost-effective way if we were to use general funds and not just the ARPA funds that we no longer have. So for these reasons, staff is recommending that council provide direction to reconstitute the work program, so to be more of a flexible, on-demand, business-driven program, so similar to that 2015 model that we had, to meet the specific needs of our Elk Grove businesses. And we could do that in a variety of ways I have there. So creating kind of more of a pipeline and providing targeted training for residents that are tailored to our businesses' needs, so asking our businesses, what is it that you need, and really targeting that training for them, for our residents. Facilitating partnerships between our businesses and local and regional workforce organizations. There are many out there that we can connect the two, and they can provide low-cost or no-cost services. We can incentivize our businesses to hire Elk Grove residents, that's another strategy. Provide regional employment market analysis. We could help with walking our businesses through the state hiring incentive programs. We can amplify key job postings. Let's say a business comes into town, they need 30 software developers. We can amplify those job postings. We could have job fairs. And then we could also refer our residents to our partners as well. So these are some of the strategies we can use, but ultimately, it's really to build that connection between our workforce development program and the specific needs of our Elk Grove businesses, is what we're recommending. And if council decides to move forward with this, it would be a very minimal cost. We would use our own budgeted economic development general funds to do this and existing staff. The alternative is that council could direct us to maintain the workforce development program the way it is now, as a more resident-training-focused program, rather than reconstitute it as a business-needs-focused program. And if council decides to do that, there's a number of steps that would need to happen. We would need to issue an RFP using analytics, so looking into those job openings, seeing what makes sense, what areas we should really be training folks in. We would get new service providers. Obviously, our service providers could reapply if they choose to answer that RFP. And we would contract with those new service providers using, again, general funds, because there are no more ARPA funds that we can utilize. That cost is unknown. We assume that would be around $1 to $2 million to start off, and we would return to council and get those contracts authorized. So that concludes my presentation. Staff is here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up public comment. We have Marla Clayton Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So my name is Dr. Marla Clayton Johnson. I'm the new Director of Adult Education at Charles A. Jones Career and Education Center in Sacramento City Unified School District. And I'm really just here to kind of thank Sarah and her team and the partnership that was created in the work program. We were one of the service providers, and in about six weeks, we're able to train 64 Elk Grove residents and prepare them for the workforce in our forklift training certification program. So my comment is to really just thank them and to continue the partnership, hopefully, and prepare Elk Grove residents for the workforce. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. I will close the public comment opportunity. And let's see, we'll turn to the right. Questions, comments?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So to start with, I feel this was a very appropriate use of the ARPA funds. And we won't go back through it, but we all remember ARPA was on the heels of the COVID crisis, and there was opportunity for, the money was provided for a number of reasons, but one of which was to provide assistance to underemployed residents, right? And so I think it was a very, very appropriate use for the city's money for ARPA. Further, the question then becomes, I start thinking about, is workforce development within the scope of a city, or is that a responsibility for the county? And that's a question I think that many people would take, might differ with. We could probably have five different answers on that up here. I personally believe that right now, the county essentially has a charter to do that workforce development. Typically, cities don't do that, right?
That's right.
So I was very happy to see all of the training that happened, both with the warehousing, forklifting, as well as cybersecurity and information technology. I think our providers did very, very well. People were able to get trained. It was slightly disappointing that the placement was lower than we would expect. So while I believe they did a great job, I think you can't, if something doesn't work, we can't continue to do it. We have to figure something different, right? And so I think that staff recommendations, my personal opinion, I think staff recommendation is appropriate. And yeah, I would support staff's recommendation.
Councilmember Brewer?
No, I'm in concurrence with recommending the staff recommendation. I think it's really good that we're seeing these types of results despite not having enough... enough in getting people into the workforce. At least the retraining of people and getting them prepared is a worthy endeavor, because as we saw, the need was there, it's still there, and that's why it's good to see that the CyberProud contract is still active. Now, with this extending to December 31st, we will need to start thinking now on whether to continue the mission or let it sunset, but these are the types of conversations we need to have now, especially in light of the contract that we had through the Charles Jones Career Center expiring just a couple of weeks ago. And so, no, I definitely am supportive of the staff recommendation to that extent.
Can I just speak a little bit on that point? So the ending of the contract is really, we've hit all of the number that's been put aside of folks to train for CyberProud, they've done a great job at marketing it and folks going through. So really, the ongoing funds that are in the contract would be going towards the, getting them prepared into the job market, and those like ongoing funds, the bonuses that are built into the program and things of that sort. So it's not really going to be going towards the training of folks further on. So we've done a couple pivots based on like things we were saying, we're always looking at, okay, that's why you saw kind of a list of different types of tech-related things, we were really trying to figure out what makes the most sense for the market, and then we pivoted a couple times for doing more evening classes to accommodate folks that couldn't make daytime classes and things like that. So, yeah, so always looking at what makes the most sense, and at this point, ending the contract would just be ending those career services that are built in and those bonuses that we've kind of promised folks that they would receive going through the program if they did get that employment.
Now, are people still applying and coming through the program, or has that window closed?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The window's closed for the actual, so the last 48 are being trained right now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Suen?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sarah, for the presentation. I support staff's recommendation, I just have a question. Do you have any idea, or some general idea of the needs of the Elk Grove businesses right now?
Yeah, so we are actually conducting a launch today, a business survey for our businesses. We worked really hard on listing out all of the key areas of concern that they might have, so that we can create programs that would meet their needs the best. And so part of that questioning is about talent, like are you finding that people are underskilled, or are you finding that people that are applying are overqualified? Are you like, very extensive? We would love to provide that link to you all if you do come and come to our businesses. Obviously, we're doing outreach to our businesses, also collaborating with our chamber to get those in front of our businesses as well, is part of the plan, and so, but we know that you guys are out in the community, so if you'd love that link, I'd be happy to share it with you, and yeah, so hopefully after that survey, we'll get that quality data that would really allow us to move forward in the right direction.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Sarah, for bringing this presentation before us. I just want to, just to be correct, so the staff recommendation is that council provide direction on reconstituting the work program from flexible and demand to business-driven programs, correct? So we're just switching the name of it.
No, the name could stay the same for marketing purposes, it's just really a shift from being focused on a bottom-up approach, trying to train residents and hoping they're going to get jobs, to a top-down approach, really focusing on the businesses' needs, and then adjusting accordingly to meet those needs.
Perfect, thank you. And then, also saw that there's 116 people who have graduated through the program, correct?
For CyberProud.
For CyberProud.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, there's 116 from CyberProud and 72, I believe, from, sorry, 73, from Charles A. Jones.
And then, okay, I just want to, I know that's always hard when we're talking about funding, especially from general funds, but these are lives that we have changed and that we've promised that we're going to be there with them, walking with them, and I know it's only one-time ARPA funding, which a lot of cities are still trying to figure all that out, or, I kind of, it's just a difficult one, because I think we, for me at least, I truly care about people. We're about helping our residents who, for no fault of their own, don't have that career path, we want to make a difference in their lives, and for folks to take time out of their evenings, out of their weeks, to go and get this training and get retrained up. You know, I saw some of the manufacturers, like Siemens, that they're hiring, that is amazing story. I don't know, you said that there's a graduation, I believe, coming up pretty soon.
For CyberProud.
Is there any way that we could also attend, or, I mean, just putting names to faces and seeing them walk around?
If you'd like to meet some of them, they're actually doing a final presentation at our office, so you're more than welcome to come sit on too.
Please, please do pass that information on.
And just to be clear, sorry, we're not abandoning the strategy of not training Elk Grove residents, so that's still part of like, a potential, again, more of a case-by-case basis, but the needs of the businesses would be what was driving the training.
Absolutely, thank you.
Great comments from my colleagues, but I will just say is that, obviously, the one-time monies are gone, and so we do need to pivot towards the needs of the businesses. I think that's a great strategy, and you have outlined some excellent recommendations. So I look forward to seeing this, and I know that this has been very meaningful to those that have gone through our programs, so we have changed lives, and that's something that we can all be very proud of, and will continue to help and serve. And to the extent, there are numerous programs that we aren't necessarily a part of, but they're out there. And so if we can start compiling those lists and at least provide those opportunities, that even if it's not, you know, through the city, there are many others through other businesses in the county and so forth.
Absolutely.
Would be great. So, thank you, great job.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
That'll be item 9.4, which is to consider appointment of seven voting members to the Arts and Creative Economy Commission. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. We have a recruitment for the reconstituted Arts and Creative Economy Commission through your action back in December of 2024. We set a deadline for applications for February 5th of 2025. We got over about three dozen applications to go through, as listed out in the staff report. In the packet, you'll find that there are a couple more applications that didn't meet the qualifications that were established under the resolution, and then a few applications trickled in after the fact, but we have about just over a dozen folks that would like to speak on behalf of their applications, so I'd like to stop talking and turn it over to them.
Excellent. Well, at this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity, and if you are here to speak on this item, if you're seeking an appointment or supporting someone, this is your opportunity to fill out a blue card and submit that, in case you weren't aware. So just sharing that. We do have numerous speakers, we typically have three minutes. I will allot the three minutes, but if we can, if we can, do two minutes or less would be ideal, so that we can get through the number of speakers as well as the appointments themselves. So with that, we will start with Brian Rickel, followed by, and I apologize if I say the name wrong, it's Ray Apodaca, and I'm sure you'll correct me if I butchered it, so I apologize.
Madam Mayor, council members, thanks for having us here tonight and for working to create this. My name is Brian Rickel. I currently serve as the Dean of Arts, Media and Entertainment at Cassimis River College, which is one of the largest arts organizations in the region, and this is a subject matter that I think about constantly, because I am working with young people who are striving for a life in creativity, and working with them on how to insert themselves into their local communities to be a part of their economies and to have lives thriving in the arts. I appreciate you considering my application. When I think about cities that have really incredible creative economies in California and outside, I think about San Luis Obispo, I think about Napa, I think about Santa Cruz and Santa Barbara, I think about Asheville, North Carolina, then Oregon, Nashville, Tennessee, Santa Fe, New Mexico, and they all have economies that are rooted squarely in the bohemian idea of creativity driving their financial success. If you've ever visited or lived in any of these places, you know that it is very prevalent, art is everywhere in these places. But not just art for art's sake, it's art for purpose and meaning, right? In 2021, the cultural and arts sector contributed $1.02 trillion to the US economy. When the pandemic hit, we all turned to one thing commonly, we all turned to arts and creativity, because we were stuck in places where we needed that, right? I think about the soul and the economies of these cities and their vibrant places. Cities that invest in creative industries see higher property tax, they see increased tourism dollars, and they see much stronger local economies. Public art projects and creative spaces boost foot traffic and drive revenue upwards of 30% of what they're currently experiencing when that hasn't existed before. Creative districts are famous for attracting young professionals and entrepreneurs to the businesses that exist in those creative areas, and they create really vibrant and inclusive neighborhoods. I use Boise, Idaho as an example of this. Idaho is, I don't know, maybe I would be wrong in not considering Idaho a massively inclusive place, but when you go to Idaho, when you go to Boise, it's different, it feels different. They have murals everywhere, there's music everywhere, it's a wildly different place than a lot of the state, and I think that's important. Culturally and socially, when we invest in cultural diversity within the creative economy, it promotes inclusive storytelling. I grew up in this county, I didn't spend a lot of time in Elk Grove as a younger person, we moved here four years ago. After coming back from San Diego, I found a very vibrantly diverse community that I did not expect, if I'm being honest, and it's thrilling to me to live here. And I'll kind of leave it at this, if you've never been to the Lincoln Park Zoo in Chicago or the San Diego Zoo, we have a zoo coming. Zoos in those cities are hubs of creative economy, and they're amazing to go to. So, thank you for your time, I really look forward to the possibility of being on the committee, or the commission, and good luck. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Ray Apodaca, followed by Darcy Robertson.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, thank you for your time and I appreciate your consideration. My name is Ray Apodaca, they pronounce it perfectly, thank you. And I am proud, a resident of Elk Grove, I'm here to speak about your consideration for an appointment to the City of Elk Grove Arts and Creative Economy Commission. Like many of you here, I'm an invested member of the Elk Grove Art Community. In August of 2020, my wife and I, Gao Shang Zhang, also known as Fine Artist Annie Peony, opened the Annie Peony Fine Art Gallery and Art Studio. I have to admit to you that it has not been economically positive, however, we are still here, and I am committed and inspired to stay the course and continue to be involved and become an integral part and member of the fine art culture in Elk Grove, along with local Elk Grove artists, art-related business, schools, art teachers, cultural events, and the entire Elk Grove community. Annie Peony Art Gallery has been involved in the art community and participates in all the local art events and festivals. We are involved in bringing and exposing arts to all sectors, young and old. We have six special needs students that are referred to us from Alta California Regional Center. We are in the process of becoming authorized vendors, so we are involved with bringing the art culture to all, no matter the ability or situation. We are not an artistic island, we are part of the whole art culture, and we need to be inclusive of the complete art community in order to prosper in building a more equitable art economy that provides opportunity for all involved in the arts to reach their individual potential. Annie is inspired to create art for the community and get recognition from other art organizations outside the city of Elk Grove and direct it back to the Elk Grove Fine Arts Culture. Some highlights and examples from 2024 that have encouraged us in our vision to be an ambassador for the fine arts culture in Elk Grove. I won't mention them all, because I run out of time, but we participated in eight days and exhibited a fine art and watercolor demonstration at the 2024 California State Fair Fine Art and Photography Exhibition. There, Annie was awarded first prize in the plein air competition that was open to all artists in the state. I am proud to say that all of these achievements, even if they're small, reflects positively back to our artistic home base in Elk Grove. Defining arts and culture and the creative economy. If appointed to the Arts Commission, one primary responsibility would be to advise the city council and staff and make recommendations regarding the type and nature of arts and creative economy services. There is not one single definition, there are four different aspects, and according to the Americans for the Arts, they use four different aspects to describe the creative economy and the aspiration of an inclusive creative economy. I will focus on one, creative economy practices. The creative economy is an economic ecosystem of for-profit and nonprofit creative industries, artists, art workforce, educators, entrepreneurs, vendors, policymakers, and funders.
Sir, your time's up, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. In conclusion, thank you for your time, appreciate you.
Next up is Darcy Robertson, followed by Amy Lavowicz.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name's Darcy Robertson, and I'm an artist, I'm a ceramic artist, and I work at the Elk Grove Fine Arts Center as the gallery manager and curator. I've been doing that job for about 15 years now, with being paid for it for the last three years. My passion is art, and I have spearheaded quite a few events in the city. I have, I'm in charge and the lead of the Festival of the Arts that happens every year, this is our fourth year in Old Town Elk Grove, and I also, I also spearheaded the studio art tour that benefited everybody in Elk Grove who appreciates art. It brought in, excuse me, I'm trying to go too fast here, so I, as art gallery manager and a curator of an art center, I'm in charge of 20 different show competitions or events that happen in the center. I, so therefore, what I do is I do research, figure out what artists I would like to bring into the gallery, and I curate the show, and I hire judges, and we hang the show in the art center. So, a lot of our competitions and shows bring in people outside of Elk Grove that come here, and people from Lodi, Stockton, Placerville, Turlock, and Walnut Grove, to name a few. One of the, I've lived in Elk Grove since 1990, and one of the reasons I thought I would be good for this commission, committee, is because I've always thought, I've always felt that there's a divide between the east side of Elk Grove and the west side of Elk Grove, and I think that arts could bring the two together. I'm thinking that art in all forms can unify the city in a very creative way that economically could benefit those creative people and those who live in the city. My desire would be to promote all the talent that lives within our city and the city boundaries. So many of us creatives and those that enjoy the arts go into Sacramento to either enjoy a play, musical, poetry, or readings or visual arts. It's time for that to end. Let's tap into our local talents and grow the two sides together to unify and benefit our economy through the arts. I believe my skills and experience and enthusiasm for the arts within Elk Grove qualifies me for this committee. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Amy Lavowicz, followed by Doug Winter.
Good evening. I know that all the applicants have a passion for the arts, that's obvious, as our first gentleman, I ditto him, and a commitment to improving our community. My passion stemmed from being an art major at CSUS in Sacramento in the early 80s, and then changing the major to communication degree with a concentration in marketing. So that is where my passion started for the arts, but then my commitment to my community can be seen in my newest position as the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce. I think I offer an additional perspective, because of my 40 years in marketing, I understand the importance of ROI, which is going to be very important for this committee and this commission, so not only a financial return for the city itself, but an investment for the city, but an inspirational return on the investment for our community itself. but an inspirational return on the investment for our community itself. So, I know the impact and I will offer decades of experience in guiding the city on how we take this investment to the next step. So, we can put in the art, but what do we do with the art? How do we connect the art and how do we market that art? So, I think I can offer some experience in that. And so, marketing them as part of making our city an arts and creative destination, which is what we want. We're creating a destination with the zoo, with other pieces of our puzzle. So, art in our community, excuse me, art in our community needs to embrace Elk Grove history, needs to embrace the history and needs to br, um, embrace the presence and then also, but we all need to look to the future. So, I'm here for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Next up is Doug Winter, followed by Cheryl Grace.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'm Doug Winter and I'm so happy to be here tonight. I've lived in Elk Grove for nine years now and in Sacramento County for 30 years. Uh, this region has been my home for most of my life and I love it so much. And especially why I love Elk Grove are the people and the strong sense of community. Even as the city of Elk Grove has grown, it's kept its small town feel where neighbors support each other, local businesses thrive, and the arts are becoming bigger, a bigger part of its identity. That's something worth protecting and I'd love to help keep that momentum going as part of the Arts Creative Economy Commission. I really appreciate the council's decision to expand the commission's role because the arts aren't just about culture. It's not just about culture. They drive economy. They drive economic growth, bring people together, they make a city more livable. As an artist educator and curator, I've seen firsthand how creative spaces, public art, and community-driven projects can revitalize neighborhoods and create real opportunities, not just for artists, but for business and residents as well. My photo, my work is rooted in photography. I'm an experimental storyteller. I'm a curator and I explore perception, memory, and inclusion. And as someone who has, uh, who is neurodivergent, I know how important it is to create artistic spaces that welcome different ways of thinking, seeing, and experiencing the world, whether it's through public art, accessible programming, or supporting local creatives. I believe that the arts should reflect and serve everyone in the community, not just those already connected to the art world. And I think that's what other people have already echoed that sentiment. Elk Grove, Elk Grove already has a strong creative foundation. I'd like to help build on that. And one way we could do this, uh, by expanding the city's maker markets into a larger maker fair, not just for artisans and crafters, but also for digital artists, tech innovators, and experimental creators. If we partner with local businesses and corporations, we can bring in resources, sponsorships, and funding opportunities to support artists and making this, uh, an economically impactful events. At its core, the commission is about investing in creativity and not just artists, but for Elk Grove as a whole. Art can bring energy, innovation, and a strong sense of identity to its city. I'd love to help Elk Grove harness that potential while keeping its community spirit alive. That's what drives me. I believe in bringing people together through art, creating opportunities where they didn't exist before, and finding ways to create more accessibility in this area. And I've seen art can shape community and I'd love the chance to help Elk Grove harness that potential. Thank you for your time. I hope I've earned your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Cheryl Grace, followed by Mike Mangannon.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Cheryl Grace. My involvement on the Arts Commission during the past 22 years, including, uh, Vice Chair, demonstrates my commitment to the arts and culture in this area. Uh, I am a charter member, past president, and current board member of the Elk Grove Fine Arts Center, which, uh, Darcy referred to. And my interest is in the visual arts, um, appreciating and promoting them. And I personally create abstract impressionistics and mixed media artwork. Um, my involvement in other local organizations include past president and member of the Elk Grove Artists Organization, uh, board member and, um, secretary and, uh, Chair of the, um, poster, uh, excuse me, the poster, um, contests that we provide. We, um, invite local, uh, high school junior and seniors, um, for the, uh, and the art students for the Elk Grove Western Festival Organization, which has been, has quite a history in this area. So, this shows, uh, for my, speaks for my, uh, flexibility and variety of interest in the community. And being part of this new commission would give me the opportunity to have input regarding programs and activities designed to develop, sustain, and expand a thriving arts and creative economic ecosystem for the city of Elk Grove. Thank you for the, uh, the opportunity.
Thank you, Cheryl. Next up is Mike Mangannon, followed by Julie Cooper.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, staff. My name is Mike Mangannon and, uh, proud resident of Elk Grove. I live across the street from Elk Grove High School and, um, I thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself and have my name be considered for the commission. You have my resume. I put that into the application. Uh, one of the things that I did want to highlight was 25-plus years in arts education, mostly music education, longtime band director at Casuma Soaks High School. Just three years ago, I moved over into the central office to be part of the arts education team under Jennifer Willbanks, uh, Vapa Curriculum Specialists. One of the things that we've learned and we've been advocating from the inside and got a little bit of the, the pipeline knowledge, um, with students coming up and into the industry. Um, you probably already know this because of your, um, your amazing decision to put this commission and expand it together, but I've been told that arts and creative economy is second now largest in California, has actually surpassed agriculture. So, that's one of the things I'm really excited about, um, to be part of that. One of the things you might not notice on the resume is I, I think one of the things I've really grown in and excelled in is to the ability to work collaboratively with others, to find out what the needs are of the community, to look forward, um, to develop and implement a shared vision among people and to move forward with that. Uh, one of the things I get a chance to do, other than working with, um, the Elk Grove Unified School District, is also to be part of our professional organization, the California Music Educators Association. Uh, I'm, uh, president-elect for that and I get a chance to meet with people all over the state on things that are cutting edge and finding out what new, what else is new and in the industry because they're very, very interested in making sure that those, um, our students get moved forward in that. Um, so, and one last thing, I just wanted to leave you with a story. Um, I moved here, like so many people, for a job and I found a home. Uh, must've been 20 years ago. And, um, I got this harebrained idea and I worked with Zach Jones of the CSD at the time and we put the, we were, we wanted to beat the Guinness World Record of the number of carolers one year. I don't know if you guys remember that. It was '03 or '04. We actually won for two days until someplace in Indiana, they, I don't know, they, they composed Jingle Bells, whatever. Anyway, so they won, but it's been my heart to be able to put Elk Grove on the map, to be a destination for the arts. I hope I get a chance to do that as well on this commission. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Julie Cooper, followed by Susan Otto.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Julie Cooper. Um, everyone's stating their resume. I have no art degree. I just know that art comes from within for me and I have been a resident of Elk Grove since 1989. So, uh, I actually had to do the math and I don't even want to say what it came out to, but I have seen a tremendous, um, growth in diversity. And even looking around this room, there are murals and pictures here that you would not have seen 36 years ago. Um, art is a passion of mine. I travel around and support local artists. I don't have the funds to just always give support, um, like I would like to and I'd hope that Elk Grove comes up with an art initiative. And so, I would love to be a part of this, uh, committee. And I think that art starts, um, at a very early age and if we can weave it throughout our community for our seniors, that would be a positive for this, uh, community. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Susan Otto, followed by Marcos Aguirre.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Susan Otto. As a resident of Elk Grove, I have to tell you, I am so impressed that you're going ahead and making a commission of this sort. I think it's going to be incredible for the community. Also, I'm incredibly impressed by the people who are here, who are speaking to you for potential members of the community. As a applicant for a member of the commu, of the commission, I want to tell you, I am arts adjacent. I am not an artist. When you come to do pictionary, I will not be the one who draws and gets you to answer the question, but I'm the one who, when you draw, I can understand what you're doing and, and get to the answer quickly. With my background in my, um, job, I have worked on strategic plans, worked with, um, elected boards and executives to make recommendations on strategic plans. And also as a resident, the fact that one of the first things that you're going to do is develop a strategic plan for this commission is the greatest foundation I think you could have. So, I look forward to the commission and what it's going to be able to do. Again, I'm excited by the city's attention to this matter and I appreciate, um, the consideration for the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Marcos, followed by Dr. Manfan.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman. My name is Marcos Aguirre. And while I'm here, I believe I'm a great candidate for the Arts and Creative Economy Commission. I'm experienced with longevity. I'm an artist always, artist first believer, but also a businessman. In 1996, 29 years ago, I painted my first commission titled Togetherness, A Multicultural Diversity Scene of Children Playing in a Park. I have 28 years of creative business in design and creative paintings titled West Coast Images. With 27 of those years consistently painting murals in the greater Sacramento region, I own and operate a progressive 501(c)(3) nonprofit, Artners, based in Sacramento, based in Elk Grove with ongoing projects here in Sacramento as well. I believe I'm a fair, open-minded individual with the ability to address, comprehend, update creative information, process, and concern. I've worked and managed over 100 artists in visual, performing, and digital practices. I offer an annual Artners Award Scholarship for high school seniors and the visual art students. I'm also a chair of another high school award program, MASA Sacramento, the sponsorship arm for the Mexican-American Hall of Fame Sports Association. I'm community-oriented. I have Artners nonprofit participation in regular community events, creating actions and creative ongoings. Since 2001, we've hosted Art Grove community events with our 14th Art Grove action occurring in two months, all while building a new creative cultural heritage movement in Elk Grove. I and the Artners nonprofit are part of Elk Grove's Chamber of Commerce. I personally have completed Elk Grove 101 Inception Class. In 2018, the Artners hosted two mural scholarship fundraiser festivals in South Sacramento, recognizing the displacement of local creatives strategically overlooked for out-of-the-region imported artists. I'm also an advocate, an advocate for the artist. I personally experienced being targeted from unsavory business practices in the revamped creative industry. I can offer professional guidance, protection, and wisdom to the city of creatives for non-artist investors. I've also, will continue to be a public speaker against the smoke and mirrors, actions sacrificing the creatives along the way. I'm a practicing professional artist, painting murals, graphic design, grant writing, and public event hosting. The development of future, I'm the developer of the Future WXM Mural Museum in downtown Sacramento, a Sacramento Hospitality Zone under the I-80 US Freeway paralleling, paralleling the 21st Street Corridor. My current creative actions are murals at Luther Burbank High School, the De La Concha, the VFW Hall Post 67, and the Sojourner Truth African American Museum.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is Dr. Manfan, followed by Aaron Vowell.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Manfan and I'm a resident of Elk Grove for the past 20 years and I would appreciate your consideration of my application. I think I bring to the commission a myriad of experience that would help, uh, enhance the economic vitality of our city through the arts and creativity. Early in my career, I worked for five years in City Council and County Board of Supervisors in San Diego, where I advised my council member and county supervisor on policies relating to arts, culture, and economic development. Afterwards, I went to the private sector and worked in architecture for 10 years and then afterwards, uh, two colleagues of mine went out and formed our own, uh, architectural company, uh, generating about $2 million in revenue at that time. I then, uh, had to stop that, uh, work because Governor Brown appointed me to the California Board of Governors for the community colleges. So, um, given my private sector job and my public sector job, and especially in the last 10 years where I teach, uh, college students at CRC, uh, on business and entrepreneurship. So, whether the students are in culinary arts, uh, or architecture, or in photography, and they take my business classes, and then I would merge their artistic ability with, um, entrepreneurship and some would, um, transform those ideas into, uh, viable enterprise of their own. So, blending both the private and public sector as well as the artistic, uh, combined with the entrepreneur spirit of individuals in or out Grove, I think I can be of help to the commission and would appreciate your consideration. So, I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Aaron Vowell, followed by Pablo Espinoza.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council Members. Thank you for having me this evening and for considering my application for this commission. As a resident of Elk Grove, a dedicated volunteer and a parent with children in the community, I'm invested in the city's cultural and economic growth. As the Executive Director of Explore Elk Grove, our destination marketing organization, I have a passion for leveraging arts and culture and driving visitation and economic impact into this community. Um, we see great potential in expanding Elk Grove's presence in theater, film, digital media, live music, galleries, and special events. And by investing in these areas, we not only enhance the quality of life for our residents, but also create new revenue streams for tourism, business partnerships, and job creation in Elk Grove's creative economy. My experience combined with my background in tourism, community engagement, and strategic partnerships gives me a strong foundation to contribute meaningfully to this commission. I'm eager to support initiatives, to listen, to foster creativity, enhance accessibility, and positive, uh, in position Elk Grove as a vibrant destination for both visitors and residents. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I'm getting a network connection disruption message on my computer.
So am I. That's why we keep our speaker sheets available over in the corner. So, I think our system went down. Yeah, and I think I can grab who's next, so.
I'm not sure who's after. I can't really see. Okay, Nicole Hadad is after.
Good evening, Mayor, Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Robles, Councilmember Spies Brewer, and Suen. Uh, my name is Pablo Espinoza. It is an honor to be here asking for your consideration for appointment for the Arts and Creative Economy Commission. And, uh, before, I, I want to thank, uh, Mr. Rickel. Uh, my beloved son Adrian used to be one of those kids that consumed his art, uh, River Col, Consumers River College. Uh, one of those kids with that saw, that art, uh, and the performance of it or being a fat- and the performance of it, or being a fashion designer, was a vehicle and an opportunity to fulfill not just his heart, his soul, and also to make a decent living. So it's incredibly important. And I think that, you know, we don't need to talk about the creation of this commission. Clearly, you guys have seen the value of it. The work of your staff has made that very clear. I want to tell you about my experience and my passion. I spent about a decade, well, almost 20 years as a television news journalist. Then I spent the following 20 years as a communicator, working in the public sector, bringing stories, being a storyteller, conveying ideas to the public that oftentimes is skeptical about A, B, or C idea as to why it is worthy. We're not talking about the worthiness of this project. It's clear as day. I was also in the nonprofit sector, spent the last decade as a member of the Board of Directors of the California Museum and Broadway Sacramento and other organizations that are focused in the development of young minds and the encouragement of those minds. I am a resident of over a quarter of a century of Elk Grove. When I came, the population was about 71,000 or so people, or up to about 180. We're doing so great in terms of the availability of arts, the Elk Grove Fine Arts Center, the Spears Gallery, the Annie Peony Fine Arts Gallery. Thank you for talking about them, Mr. Podaca. Combining all of this restaurant, coffee brewing scenery with our creation and the opportunity to combine that with the development of an economic incentive, not just for those minds and souls, but also for the pocketbooks of our community. We have the public display of art at District 56, Radiant Eddie coming up to the library. And those are all things that are going to be important for our community. What I'm hoping to do is bring all of that and put it on steroids and to actually bring about success into the pocketbooks of our community. I want to conclude by saying that the art started early with my grandfather, who was a carpenter, and he used to work creating stages in Ecuador. My mother was a painter, a pianist. My father was, although he was an accountant by trade, he was also a painter. And again, my son, who took that to a whole nother level by being, again, a fashion designer, a music producer, a video producer, a filmmaker. And I made it very clear in five seconds how important that is for all of us, not just for the heart and soul, but for the pockets. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up is Nicole Hadad, followed by Marie Thomas. And I think that's our final speaker.
Good evening, everyone. I do not have a speech prepared, so I'm going to try to make this short and sweet. I grew up in Elk Grove. I went to Folks Ranch Elementary. And I feel, I've been an artist all my life. And I feel like going, being a student in the Elk Grove Unified School District at the time that I was really instilled the arts into me. And being an artist my whole life, I look back on where that came from, and it was from being from Elk Grove. I left when I was 18. And for 20 years of my adult life, I lived in other places around the United States. And two years ago, I moved back to try to become a professional artist. And I didn't find that there was enough art things going on in Elk Grove to satisfy what I needed. And I find myself going to Midtown, to Sacramento, and to even Rancho Cordoba, where I recently got a art studio to try to develop my artistic self right now. And I think that it would be really cool to have people on the Arts Commission that are from Elk Grove and kind of had their story, their artistic story woven into Elk Grove. So I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next, and our final speaker is Marie Thomas.
Hi, I have this great speech prepared, thanks to, you know, AI helping me out. But I'm going to switch it up. I did not grow up in Elk Grove. I was a military brat. I have spent most of my life in the Sacramento area. My kids have gone to school in Elk Grove for 10-plus years. I teach at a Montessori, doing arts. And because art is always cut from funding, I still teach art within my class. So they get a little perk having me in their class. I have been a graphic designer, had my own business for over 13 years. So I know how to work with fundraising. I know how to help nonprofits get that money in, working on a limited budget. Let's see what else I can say. Oh, I've been a dance mom for over 15 years. Very proud of that. Never would have guessed that for my life. But that also taught me about the art of dance and how that is also not put out there like it should be. And I want to be on this commission because I am trying to bring art out into Elk Grove. Because, like I said before, I'm going to Midtown to do art shows. I'm going to San Francisco. I'm going to Ventura. I'm going everywhere else, and a couple times in Elk Grove, too. But there's not the opportunities for us to display our art like in other places around here. I have started an art kickit at the Ever After Wine Bar in Elk Grove. So I am trying to get more people out there to do things. And that's kind of helped out with myself and meeting other artists in the Elk Grove area. Let's see. Yeah, so I'm a working artist. I just want to bring art to Elk Grove. I don't want to have to travel so far to do what I love. So yeah, thanks for the consideration.
Thank you. And that is our final speaker.
Mayor, do you want to waive the 10 o'clock rule?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, we're not going to wrap this up in five minutes. We might, you never know. First of all, just wow. The sheer number of applicants. This is, since I've been mayor, this is the largest volume of residents that have expressed an interest in serving on a commission. And so I want to thank every single applicant, whether you're watching online, those that are here, those that could not make it. This just makes me really proud of our community that you were all willing to step up and serve. So before I get into sort of the processes, what I do want to say is every single applicant, whether you were selected or not, should absolutely be a part of this commission. Unfortunately, I only have seven slots for a voting member. But you should all be active participants in helping shape this new commission. So I want to share some of this burden with my colleagues, make it easier for me. So similarly, as you recall, with our Diversity and Inclusion Commission, I asked for your top pick, and we just moved them forward. So what I would like to do is move, you know, your top pick forward. And if there's, you know, if there's duplicates, go to your second or third. And then that will leave two spots that we can have a discussion on.
Okay.
So this way, it's not all on me, and I don't have to be the bad guy for the whole thing. But I probably still be. But I want to share this with everyone. So I will start with you, Councilmember Suen. And so the goal is, you know, if there's any objection, we can discuss it. But the goal is to move the five forward, and then we'll discuss the other two.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I just, I do want to take a moment to echo the word you said. I mean, this is the largest pool of candidates I've seen also in my 10 years on this council for any commission. So I was just going to say the same thing, which is, it really shows how passionate and interested people are in the arts, which is kind of making me rethink that performing arts center we have kind of on the shelf over here, you know. So, but anyway, that's. You heard them. We got a little extra Measure E money I heard from Jackie. So, you know, 100 million is pretty close. Okay, all right. So anyway, there's so many different directions you can go, as in the arts, as the things we're talking about here, right? And so there's, you know, I see a lot of experience in all different forms and how, as all of you were coming up and speaking, and you only represented a portion of who was applying, but just how everyone can integrate in different ways onto this commission. And I'm so glad the mayor mentioned that even if you're not chosen, please, please stay involved because you do have something to add. And for, you know, life happens, people change out. And so there's always going to be opportunities. So this isn't a one-and-done. Having said that, look, I want to, there's just so many. But I want to go with an individual who, it brought me back to my own kids. And that was the VAPA program, when they were doing VAPA and how special it was for them. And I thought, we were one of the few schools, elementary schools in the school district to continue with VAPA. And so I'm going to push forward Michael Magnon on this for partly, big part of that reason, but also all the other different forms of art that he transcends and what he can bring to this commission. Thank you.
So our next, we'll go to our Vice Mayor. Who would you like to break forward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Councilman Spees. Or Spees, sorry, Suen. It's starting to get to 10 o'clock. It's starting to get to 10 o'clock. 10 o'clock roll, right? No, but thank you to everyone for applying. This is, this is a fun, going to be a fun, creative commission. This is definitely going to be something exciting. I wish we could take everyone, but unfortunately, because of the number of limited commission seats. But one of the stories that really resonated a lot was Mr. Espinoza. You brought something, the experience that you were tying in with businesses and bringing in with the economy and wanting to advance and further bring that to our city. Something that really truly resonated with me and the level of experience that you have as Board of Directors on the California Museum, as well as the Broadway Sacramento, which can eventually be tied into Elk Grove, Broadway Elk Grove. Not trying to start anything, just saying. But truly, truly, I can see that you're going to bring that passion on this commission, too. So you're going to be the name that I'm pushing forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So my top choice, because this feels like a fancy football draft. You bring a lot, you have a lot of talented people that bring passion, desire, and a real strong urge to bring their skills to the table to help Elk Grove develop not only its art scene, but also what we can do to make the economy work in tandem with it and marry it together. You have to have a person with a lot, with rich experience on several different levels and the worldliness that comes with it. The person that comes to my mind on this has been a person that I've been talking to about doing something of this nature for the past several years, and that's Brian Rickel. And I really believe that having him on this commission can definitely bring a lot of these energies together and really make this commission really special. So I definitely, wholeheartedly like to bring Brian's name forward into this.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, let's see. Where was I going to go? The first thing was, oh, the first thing was, I wanted to remember Judy Tafoya, a gal who, 2017, put a group together and wanted to develop something about the creative economy. And she passed away, 2021, I think is when it was. And it was sad to kind of see her dream dissipate a bit in those months during COVID. But I'm absolutely thrilled that the city is taking on the creative economy. I'm glad to see her memory, her desire continues to move on. So I just wanted to recognize that. You know, it always feels like a cliche because every time we're doing these selections, you know, we say, oh, my gosh, the candidate field is just amazing. Oh, you know, and it's like, I feel like we're a broken record when we say it. But my gosh, if you were to read all of the applications, we have folks who studied at the Sorbonne in France. We have people who have exhibited in Milan, Italy, in Mexico. We have people who have been running our arts center here in Elk Grove for a good number of years. We have, you know, we even have folks from the previous commission, some of whom have been on, you know, for 17 years. So when I say it again, like I say it every single time, we have some absolutely stunning candidates. And it is very unfortunate that we can only pick seven. So please, I don't know if we can get these folks on a list so that when we actually get these meetings started, we can involve them because we really have an extreme amount of talent in Elk Grove. It always amazes me that when you go for a walk, as most politicians have to do every two to four years, the folks that you meet out there and the folks that you meet in a community gathering, it's just amazing. So for me, from my selection, and what spoke to me about this was the entrepreneurial ship, the entrepreneurial aspect of the creative economy. And I would select Dr. Manfan.
Okay. Well, we have four men selected.
Oops.
By the way. So I will be bringing forward three women. So I accept all of those. I think those are, you know, the part of the challenges is, we all probably had some of these other folks on our top two, three list. So that's always very, very difficult. So the three, I'm going to start with the top person, and that's Erin Vowell. Erin brings that great perspective of balancing out travel and tourism and what we're looking at for this commission. So she will be the name that I want to move forward just on its, as my recommendation. But the other two, for consideration, I would like to nominate Julie Cooper for discussion. And then, so that's one. One more there. And I, this is hard. We have, like I said, just some amazing candidates. And it's very hard, but I really do want to provide balance on this commission and all of the other perspectives. So, and the different mediums and the different backgrounds and so forth. I think the other, for that final slot, I want to have a discussion on whether or not we would like to bring forward a name from the no longer existing Arts Commission. Because I believe four former Arts Commissioners applied, one that came this evening, and there's three others that have applied. I'm good with any of them for that final slot, if that's important for this council. If not, I do have a solid substitute as well that has been active in this community for a long time and very much involved. So I'd like to have that as a discussion.
Well, I do think it would be appropriate, Madam Mayor, to have at least one from the previous commission. That would be helpful, I think. So I'd be supportive of one.
Of having?
Yeah, I would, too. I think, you know, that's a little bit like that continuity of leadership, you know, things that have happened in the past. So, yes.
Your thoughts?
It's helpful to have that bridge. It really is. And so I'm definitely supportive of that.
Yes, supportive. Okay, so now it comes down to whom. So we have four outstanding candidates. And looking at the different backgrounds, the area of interest, serving in the community, longevity in the community, and all of those things matter to all of us. So with that, I would like to, for that final slot, bring forth Sally Gutridge to round out the seven-member board. And then with that, I will say again, everyone that's applied, please be a part of the commission. As you know, this was a very difficult decision, and we only had seven voting slots. But all of you play an important role shaping this, lending your voice, your experience. I'm thinking of Darcy Robertson with the Fine Arts. I'm thinking of Annie Peony, who I would love to have brought forward. But in terms of the criteria, unfortunately, did not meet all of the requisite requirements. Marcos, your work is tremendous, and it speaks for itself. And, but I see you on the other side as a possible vendor in helping us get to that level. And so, you know, we want your input. We want all of your inputs, including our former Arts Commissioners. Please be a part of this process. This is a first-time commission. So your value... This is a first-time commission, so your value, your input, your voices are going to be needed now more than ever. So thank you to everybody that applied. Thank you for everyone that showed up tonight, and congratulations to the seven of our new, newly-formed Arts and Creative Economy Commission. Congratulations. We want to thank you all.
Thanks for staying late.
Yeah. Sorry about that. So you have all the names, Clerk? Okay, very good. With that, we will move on to our item 10. Anybody have a report, future agenda item, or comment that you would like to make at this time?
I'll wave my report. Thank you.
I'll wave. I just wanted to announce that Councilmember Suen is going to be having a job fair April 5th, Saturday.
April 5th, yes. Yeah, job fair.
Oh, job fair. I thought you said a job. So there's a job fair, so yes, please share that. Nothing else to announce, I just want to thank everybody. We will adjourn the meeting at 10:10. Well, that was hard.